You're on record.
First you.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 12:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkowitz is not here. Mr. Toskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
Mr. Musarella?
Here.
Mr. Paree?
Here.
Mr. Ready?
What's that?
Uh, Ms. Snyder's not here. Uh, Mr. Willins?
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick?
Present.
Board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
Okay, start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Okay, this is the seven o'clock special meeting. Is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board? It is not on this evening's agenda. I hear none and see none. Let's go right into the applications. Twenty-two seventy-three, Robert Connors, 154 Rainbow Trail, C-Variance to construct a two-story addition, second-story addition, balcony over open deck, and other things.
Circuit, you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about before the board serves help you got. And for the record, you're Robert Connors, owner of 154 Rainbow Trail. All right, thank you. Just want to have a seat. Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn.
Okay, so you need Variances for a front yard on Longview Road of forty foot is allowed, three feet is proposed.
Correct.
Yards and courts, open decks, pardon me, nineteen percent is allowed, you're proposing thirty-five point eight-three. Building coverage, you're allowed fifteen, you're proposing twenty-seven oh six. Impervious coverage, you're allowed thirty and you're proposing forty-four. Why don't you tell us about your, your, you have seven thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet in a R3 zone, which is a fifteen thousand square foot zone, right, Mr. Kaplan?
Yeah.
So you've got a substandard lot?
Yes.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. Um, my wife and I moved to Persippany about five years ago, bought this house, fell in love with the community. Um, it's really hard to find a lake house on a real road. Uh, that was in a big hill or it was a million steps down or a million steps up and uh, it's um, the house has a lot of curb appeal. It was the original leasing office for the lake community. And um, we loved it. The problem with the house is it's, it was built in nineteen twenty and it's cut up a little funky and it's uh, I know the lot is severely undersized, but it's actually one of the larger lakefront lots in the neighborhood. Um, so we bought it with the idea someday we want to expand our family and uh, when that happened, uh, we would probably have to try and build an addition to the house. That did happen. I have a, a two-year-old son and a eight-month-old daughter, so uh, we decided this would probably be the perfect time to uh, to tack a giant addition on this uh, on this house. So um, yeah, we, like I said, we love the area, we love the township, uh, we love the community and um, we'd like to stay there. Um, just the house as is wouldn't function uh, for a family, uh, a growing family.
So tell us about the construction, what you're going to do, what?
Yeah, so um, as you said, the setbacks are an issue, um, but what we're looking to do um, really is build a new sixteen by twenty-four approximately um, foundation to expand the kitchen on the first floor. And then above that uh, would be uh, two additional bedrooms, uh, an expansion of the additional, of uh, the existing bathroom upstairs. Um, one of the bedrooms would be a master with an en suite. So uh, it would be one additional full bath and two additional bedrooms. Um, couple other small things inside, just reworking some of the layout, but that's, that's the main purpose of the uh, addition.
How big will the house be when you finish?
Uh, total usable, um...
Just square footage?
Yeah, square, square footage would be about twenty-two hundred, twenty-two, twenty-three hundred.
What's now?
About fourteen, yeah.
It says fifteen seventy-seven on the zoning report.
Right, yeah.
So everything is really a second-story addition?
It's a second story, like I said, there's an expansion uh, on the first floor.
Yeah.
Uh, for the, and it's mostly for kitchen.
What about that back deck? That's a pretty good-sized deck.
Yeah, so the back...
I mean, the reason I've asked these questions, you're way old.
Right, right. I, I, I do understand that. Um, so the back deck, uh, we uh, will be losing the majority of our deck to uh, build a new foundation. Um, if you, I don't know, if you have the plan in front of you?
I do.
Um, so basically that foundation would be squaring off our existing kitchen to the garage and, and the new structure will be over there, which eliminates about two-thirds of our existing deck.
Okay.
So um, we'd like to bump that deck out a little bit. And the wrap around the back was, uh, I don't know if you can see the picture of, uh, the back of my house on the front page of that. Uh, I have that weird little window uh, sticking out of the back of my home. We'd really like to turn that into a door. I have a paper patio uh, over that area already. Um, so what we'd like to do is uh, run that over possibly uh...
To connect up?
Yeah, just to kind of connect those two spaces.
What's the deck gonna be made of?
Um, I mean, it'll be pressure-treated for rain. We're still debating on...
Rain can get through it?
Rain can get through it. Uh, I think on that section, I might, uh, I know Trex makes a product now, um, that has like a rain diverter, it converts it into um, a gutter on the left-hand side. I do have a drain.
Well, you have a whole lot. Drain's in the Rainbow Lake, right?
Yeah, all the, all the, everything slopes right down into that. And I have a, like a four-and-a-half-foot retaining, fieldstone retaining wall right off, offside of that patio.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it, there's uh, kind of a tree in the way, but that's all in a raised garden bed and there's a four-foot drop from that garden bed to my backyard, which is still sloped, but it's, it's, it's pretty gradual, but everything in my house runs right off of that.
The addition's gonna match up with the existing architecture?
Yes, yes. So uh, if you see on the second page, I'm sorry, the fourth page of that plan, see a quick mock-up, we are trying to keep it in the style of the home.
We don't have a, we don't have, we don't have a plan.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, so it's, right now, we have like kind of a slope cape. Um, it was converted attic, it's had an addition and an addition and an addition. And um, so we're planning over the garage, doing like a gambrel-style roof, um, something that keeps with the architectural theme and uh, and something in keeping with the nineteen twenties feel. We actually searched around and it took us a long time to find an architect willing to work with us that didn't say just rip the whole roof off and turn it around and basically demolish your house because it doesn't make sense. And um, we, we, we found a woman who works at a Montclair that there's a lot of restoration work on Victorians and uh, and, and specific period style homes um, to work with us on this project. So we've been happy with her ideas and we think it keeps to uh, to the nature and the uh, and, and why we kind of fell in love with the home in the first place. It's, like I said, it's got great curb appeal and um, uh, it's one of the favorites of the neighborhood.
You discuss the additions with your neighbors at all?
I have, yeah. Um, our, our two neighbors next to us are pretty excited, they're um, they're excited to see uh, younger families moving into the neighborhood and uh, the uh, the uh, family that lives across the street from me, the uh, the woman who lives there, said, you know, I've always, I've always thought, why didn't they put anything over the garage? We have so much unused space.
So you, you've had no issues or your neighbors have no issues with runoff going to their property?
No, no.
Probably because it all goes to them.
Everything goes straight down, yeah. And uh, I have a pretty good amount of room in between the homes. Um, so this is uh, I do have that Longview uh, road um, that runs down, technically it's the front of my home that kind of faces the side, it faces my neighbor. Um, so I probably don't have a house uh, within thirty feet at least on either side of me, thirty to forty feet probably. Um, so yeah, I, there's, there's been no runoff issues.
Looking at the Variances you're looking for, Robert, you will have, will have to have young families like in the neighborhood wanting to stay.
Right.
A couple of questions that I don't quite understand. Existing right now, as far as the front yard deck, it's a Longview, that doesn't exist now, is that correct?
Um, the...
The front yard?
Yeah, Longview Road. So technically back, like uh, running along the back of my house, it does not exist. Uh, I'm not really sure why it's listed as front yard deck. It would be in the back, yeah, it would be in the backyard, it's on the lakeside. Like I said, my, my, my house is kind of oriented the wrong way. There used to be a cul-de-sac where my neighbor's house is. Um, like I said, it was a, it was a model home for the lake community and it was the original leasing office, so there was a big cul-de-sac. Eventually the cul-de-sac got filled in, built the home, so my front yard is really kind of my side yard. The front yard is, is the Rainbow Trail side.
Do you have significant vegetation around the house that kind of shelters it from the street view or?
Uh, yeah, um, I actually have a lot. I've got about a almost twenty-foot rhododendron in front of my house and um, a tree, shrubbery of boxwood right in front.
So the, so the negatives of this, of this project being the impervious coverage and a couple of others, it's kind of offset by the uniqueness of the house, the fact that you do have side yards that, that...
Right.
Uh, and uh, it's your dream home, right?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
And you want to stay in Persippany?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
I have a question regarding the, just the observation on the plan, the survey. The fireplace and the shed is extending into the right-of-way, uh, to the, it looks like it goes over the property line.
Right, so um...
There's stairs there within the right-of-way, I know this is...
Yeah, so my property exceeds well beyond what my actual property lines are. Like the property that I maintain, this tax map was written up in nineteen twenty-seven, well before this, all of this stuff.
You maintain the right-of-ways?
Right, exactly, so...
And you've approached on, is it a real fireplace or is it a...
No, it's like an outdoor fire pit.
Use it.
They're existing.
Use it.
Yeah, it does get used, yeah.
What do you mean it does get used? What's a year or...
Oh, no, uh, well, now with little kids, it doesn't get used much, but when we first moved in, maybe once, twice a month, we would use it, the outdoor, I mean, only in the summer.
Yeah.
Um...
Improvement to the roof, roof line drainage will be accounted for?
Yeah, um, everything right now already ties into underwater that, that brings it from the front, our underground drainage that brings it to the front.
So there won't be any major changes or?
No, 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 no. Everything will, um, I mean, we'll, we'll have all new gutters and roofing when, when this is done, but everything will re-tie back in to uh, to the existing drainage after the home.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Hear none, see none. Nothing else you'd like to add, is there?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application and support of the application? I hear none and see none. Quick uh, comment?
Sure, looks really good. You're improving a house that you want to stay in and your neighbors seem to be happy, no one's complaining, and you have no water issues, so I'll be voting for it.
Volunteer frame of resolution?
Go, Scott, you're up.
Okay, application twenty-two colon seventy-three, Robert Connors, 154 Rainbow Trail, block one oh nine, uh, lot twenty-seven, zone R3, recommend granting a C-Variance to construct a two-story addition, second-story addition, balcony over deck, expansion of the open deck with stairs and two AC units contrary to sections four thirty dash thirty-five columns, four ten thirteen, and section four thirty dash ten one, or I.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Toskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Musarella?
Yes.
Paree?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Results of Variances granted memorializes at our May meeting and you'll be free to proceed at that. First meeting in May.
Great, thanks very much.
Uh, good luck.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Nora, was Levine carried for another?
Levine is being carried to May third.
Oh, okay. Motion to carry, application twenty-two to May, eighty-two, to May third without further notice and was whatever extensions are necessary?
No. Second, Toskowitz.
They actually will be noticed and they did not run the add...
Oh, okay, so with notice. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so now we go on. Application twenty-three eleven, Danish Jog, seven sixty-five Park, Park Road, C-Variance to construct a new two-story, single-family addition.
Circuit, you raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about before the board serves help you got. And for the record, you're Danish Jog?
Yes.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Right.
Okay, thank you, you're sworn to have a seat. Please speak into the microphones, Chairman, you're the witness.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, members of the board, for giving me an opportunity to present my case in front of you.
Okay, well, just give me a chance, okay?
Yeah.
Give me a chance. You need, uh, Variances for lot area, fifteen thousand is a lot, twelve thousand is proposed. Front yard dwelling, forty is allowed, you're proposing thirty-two point five. Front yard shed, forty is allowed, twenty-two is proposed. Maximum height, thirty-five feet, you're proposing thirty-six point six seven. Yards and courts, shed, six feet, side yard, you're proposing five feet. Building coverage, fifteen point eight-three, and you want twenty-four point one, but there's a note here about the sheds. An impervious coverage, thirty is allowed and thirty-two point three is proposed. Why don't you proceed with your testimony?
My name is Danish Jog.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Uh, I've been a resident of Persippany for twenty-three years and I've been in this house for, since two thousand and three. Uh, basically, the existing house is a three-bedroom, one-bath house. Uh, and we plan to fill, like demolish the existing house completely and build, rebuild the new house so that it becomes our forever home. Uh, and uh, our kids, who have moved out of the house, uh, are planning to come back to the region and we want them to invite them uh, into our house to spend some time with us uh, as we go forward. Uh, one of the things, so basically our, uh, what we propose is like we completely demolish the existing house and build a two-story uh, structure there, thousand eight hundred square feet approximately, uh, that's the current plan, uh, in the same location, uh, basically, the front yard, uh, the front yard setback will match the existing. So the front, uh, the building line will be the same as existing, the side yards and the backyard of the main building are in compliance with the coding requirement. Unfortunately, this is an undersized lot, uh, so uh, the, it's in a zone R3, uh, which requires a fifteen thousand square feet. The lot size is hundred and twenty by hundred, uh, which makes it a little difficult and will not meet our requirements and still comply with the zoning requirement. So what I'm seeking is, uh, this results in a little bit of a overage on the building coverage, uh, and also a little bit on the impervious, impervious layer coverage. So I'm requesting the board, uh, to consider these deviations and grant, uh, applica, like approve this application for Variance to build the new house.
Really, the only area you need a variance for is a minor thing in impervious coverage, which is very minor in my opinion, but the building coverage is pretty significant.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you, would you explain to the family, you said they are coming back to live in the house? Or you want to have a...
No, they are, they are moving into the area. My son currently lives in California, uh, so he is transferring to New York, uh, so he will be living somewhere around the area and we would like to, he likes to spend some time with his parents and everything, uh, so...
Okay, they, they come to visit?
Yeah. I mean, he will be living within the Persippany area, that's what we are hoping for.
So you're building a nice two-family, two-family home?
No, single-family.
Okay.
No, it's, it's just to accommodate the, uh, children who will be visiting us, who hope, we hope that will be visiting us.
How many bedrooms would you have?
Pardon?
How many bedrooms?
Uh, right now, I have three. We propose like five bedrooms.
How many bathrooms would you have?
Uh, we have one bedroom, we have one bathroom right now and uh, we intend to, uh, I think like we have proposed four bathrooms for this.
Does that include the one in the basement?
Uh, the basement is only like a, like a, it's not a finished bathroom.
What's that mean? Like half, half bath?
Yeah, it's a half bath, like there are two full baths and the rest are half baths in the, the thing, the upper levels, and the basement, it's just a, a large area and that kind of thing.
Well, a bit.
Yeah, yeah. Basement will be unfinished at this point, so...
What are your plans for the rest of it?
Uh, we, we have a living room, so basically...
No, no, sorry, the rest of the basement, you said it's unfinished at this point?
Yes.
What about the next point?
We don't know, future, we don't know, uh, but we, I, I build uh, things in my spare time, so I'd like to use that to build basically robots and things like that. I used to coach uh, robotic teams around Persippany. Uh, I would like to continue that once I retire.
So the, just to get this straight for the resolution, you're proposing two full bathrooms and then the rest will be half baths?
Half baths.
And that'll be with just a sink, cracked in a toilet?
Shower, there will be shower.
Okay, that makes it a full...
That's a half bath.
That's a full bath, I'm sorry. Then it's a full bath, uh, in the...
Every bathroom will have a shower and a toilet and a sink?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
Including the basement?
Uh, no. The basement is a half, basement is a half.
So the three upstairs will have shower, toilet, sink?
Four, four upstairs, sorry, again.
Take it, don't worry about it.
Speaking from memory here.
It's okay.
So it's four, four bathroom upstairs, one bathroom at the first floor and one half bath, one half bath in the first floor, one half bath in the basement. So it's four full baths, two half baths.
Okay.
I'll keep changing. It shows in the plan.
Tell me about this elevator.
That's a future elevator. Again, we don't plan to install it right now, but we want to make accommodation. Again, as I said, like this is going to be our forever home and in case we have mobility issues in the future, we want to be able to install some elevator in there.
So do you install the shaft and seal it off? How does that work?
Yes, so basically, we would install the shaft and uh, provide flooring at the, at each level, which can be removed later on if we need to install the elevator. And for the record, I'm a structural engineer by trade, uh, so I've planned this myself.
Impressive. And there's only one kitchen?
Uh, there's only one kitchen, yes, sir.
So the regular residents are going to be just you and your wife?
Uh, yes.
How many kids do you have?
I have two kids. One is in college and one is working.
Well, it looks like a lovely forever home, uh, built. The si, the sizing, you've wrestled with the coverage issue, right?
Yes.
There's nothing you can do about it?
We tried to make it smaller, uh, so that it's manageable in our old, old days, but at the same time, like we had to accommodate, like, uh, we have visiting families from India during summer sometimes, and we also have kids, uh, we hope that their children will spend some time with us, so it's accommodate there, like we, we want to build.
Uh, the, uh, the storm inlet is located in the front, on Park Road. Would you be tying in roof drainage from the house to the inlet?
Uh, to the inlet, no. Right now, like it all drains into the, uh, uh, the site is sloped slightly towards the back and that is the side yard, so it drains into the side yard and uh, basically goes into the...
Okay, that would be, the proposal will be, um, subject to a plot plan review by the engineering department?
Yes.
And they're going to go over the grading and the drainage and all those issues with you on that?
Understood, yes.
John, you have any more questions?
No.
You're okay down there, uh, sir? Okay?
Yes.
Questions on either side? Members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. Um, I would appreciate if you're here, please find a seat, because that's the only way I'm going to know if we exceed the capacity of the room. So find a seat. I don't want anybody standing up. There's some, there's some seats up here in the front. Is, is there anything else you'd like to add? I'm sorry about that.
No, that's fine. No, I think like I said, my...
Okay, sounds like a nice point. Any member of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. What's it sound like, guys? Decent application?
Yeah, pretty, pretty decent, uh, for the need of the family. I'm in control.
Someone frame a resolution?
Is this meeting supposed to start at seven-thirty?
Excuse me, you're interrupting us. Please sit down. Thank you. This is, this is not the seven-thirty meeting. This is the seven o'clock meeting, okay?
I'm so sorry. Excuse me, thank you.
I'm sorry if I'm cranky, but I'm not feeling well, so I don't want to start off in the wrong foot.
Would you like me to, uh, frame the resolution?
Yes, please.
Application number twenty-three eleven, Danish Jog at seventy-seven sixty-five Park Road, block one ninety-eight, lot one, in the R3 zone, I recommend that the board grant the C-Variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling and legalize the shed contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns two and four, dwelling and shed, ten, twelve, thirteen, and section four thirty dash ten C.
Second, ready?
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Toskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Musarella?
Yes.
Paree?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yep.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Results of Variances granted, uh, we will memorialize this at our next meeting and you'll be free to proceed. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn the seven o'clock meeting?
No move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's only seven twenty-seven, so we got three minutes. Anybody needs the facility, this is your option.
Fine.
You're, you're on record.
I'm very relaxed, though.
Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA ten colon four dash six at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We will, um, have the roll call next. Wait a minute, we have a roll call? No?
Sorry about that. Mr. Toskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
Musarella?
Here.
Mr. Paree?
Here.
Here.
Ready? Mr. Ready?
Still present.
Mr. Willen?
Here.
Chairman Irakay?
Present.
Also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. Ken.
Present.
Nora, I'm going to ask you the sixty-four dollar question. What's, what's the capacity of the room, Nora?
Um, I'm not totally sure off the top of my head, uh-
I think it's on the outside door, isn't it?
It may be.
Oh, there's real gentleman. He's going to look for me. Thank you.
It might be over here in the corner.
Guys in back, there's some seats up here, if you want to just grab them.
Yeah, please come and sit down. I want to make sure everybody's got a seat.
It's, uh, Nora, do you agree it's one, it's one thirty-seven?
Correct, one thirty-six.
One thirty-six. And there's some people from other applications, Mr. Chairman, so I think, once we go through the other applications, it should thin out a bit, maybe.
Well, we'll go ahead with the other applications, but at, at the point of, uh, if we can't have it, we can't have it. Uh, okay, resolutions? Are there resolutions here?
No.
No resolutions, okay. Application twenty-two seventy-five, Gavin and Valerie Spector, Six West Heading Place. I think this is a carried from the eighth-
Correct.
-of March, and if I remember correctly, this is a rather extensive, a rather extensive, um, project.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the last time we were here, we had asked for, um-
Is there seats there?
Yes.
Some, um, drawings that were submitted to see how the neighbor behind's house would be affected by the, um, construction.
Did we get new drawings?
Uh, yes, we did.
That's reckless. These are all the new drawings. You guys can sit down. Is the neighbor that is uphill from you here?
Uphill? I don't see him. No. No, he's not here.
Have you spoken with him since that, since the last meeting?
Yeah, uh, we went to our, to his house. We met directly with him. We broke out the measuring tape. We talked to him about it, and that's how our architect came up with the drawing.
Is that, is that the gentleman that was here last time? Was that the same guy?
Yes.
Of smoke, okay.
He was supposed to be here tonight. He, he came in today to see me. He said he was coming.
Yeah, I just want, I just remember what he spoke about.
And by the way, just for the record, you were sworn previously, you're still under that same oath?
Okay.
So what did we find about the question about the house behind?
This is the house beside number six.
Beside, okay, I'm sorry.
Owned by Mr. Jason Castle, who, the gentleman who questioned the height.
Microphone, microphone, sorry.
Who questioned the height of the building, and he was concerned that it was cutting off his view.
Uh-huh.
At that meeting, you requested that I present another drawing, which is the one that's in front of you now, showing the side elevation of his home, including a photograph, I hope you've all got the photograph as well, which is this one. He is right at the front boundary with his home. He's right on the front boundary, or the street boundary. He's as far forward as he can go. We have elected to go as far back as we can possibly go. In fact, the rear wall of our proposed home is three foot six from the rear boundary. The reason it's three foot six is because there's a row of trees along the fence, which we would like to keep. So that does allow us to keep the trees along the rear boundary. As far as the area that is supposedly blocked, you'll notice that there is, on the drawing, an elevation of his home in its position on the front boundary. And then, over, superimposed on that, I've shown a dotted outline, which is the proposed new home to be built there. The interesting thing here is, it is a fair bit lower. It's about almost six feet lower than his house, albeit it's obviously down the hill anyway. The windows that he's concerned about, on the upper level, there are three windows. We only cover one of them, and bear in mind, this is at right angles to the, his wall. The fact of the matter is, we have pushed so far down the site that there's actually seventeen feet between our wall and his. So, given that, this is a little hard to see perhaps, but the view from the last window on his wall is actually not really covered, because you can see past the roof on our side, being that it's seventeen feet away.
Can I just ask a quick question, please?
Sure.
So Peter, being that the, the person who had concerns is not here, but they met. Are we allowed to ask them and get an, a re- answer how the meeting went, and if he is still, was that like a hearsay thing, or? It would be hearsay, but I mean, it's, they're under oath, so, uh- Is it fair to ask them, just to get something on the record that? I would. Okay. Do you, did your neighbor seem to come away, uh?
Well, I'll go one step further than that.
Sure.
I spoke to him this morning.
Okay.
He called me.
Yep.
Speak to the-
There we go.
Just talking about you.
Yes, except for you.
So far.
So, I guess he can speak to himself now.
Yep. Because my, my concern, you know, I like the house for me personally. I thought everything was good. He had concerns. He, he articulated real well, so I guess if he comes here and says he's good, for sure for me, it's good. Could still be good, but if he's okay with it, then I think, for me, there's like nothing to talk about.
What do we hear from him?
Yeah?
Come on down. You okay, bro? No phones.
Just for the record, what's your, your, your name?
Jason Castle.
Okay, Jason Castle.
Jason, you had, you had a meeting with the applicant and the applicant's, uh, um, architect.
I did, yes.
Weren't you satisfied with the, what they presented to you?
What, what, what we saw was more of an extension of the meeting that was had before. Um, I, the concerns that I had, and I brought a copy for the, for the gentleman. And then also, I-
Oh, this is not the time to give to us.
Yeah, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Can't give to us.
Okay, no problem.
Just between you two, and if it, and, and I'll be honest with you. If this issue between you guys is not over, I don't want to hear about it tonight.
No, I, I don't think-
You guys have to resolve it and come back here with a resolution. All right, so-
I think we can probably resolve any issues. The, there were just concerns that we had, and I think that, uh, the architect had probably put them on the record and addressed them, and we might be good tonight. If not, then we'll go back and discuss, but I only had an opportunity to see this today, which was a little frustrating, so, um, the concern that we had was, uh, one, the setback is not in the, it's not in the, uh, the style of that street. And on our side of the street, the setback is four feet. On the opposite side of the, the street, the setback is a foot and a half. And this setback being nearly twelve feet is kind of out of character. Um, the other issue that we had was, the entirety of our backyard, our entire view is eclipsed uh, by the setback and the fact that the, uh, the rear of the home is only three feet from the property line.
So what are we going to do about this? What are we going to do about this?
What, what can we do?
Well, the plans were- I'll tell you, I'll tell you how this goes, okay? They make a presentation. We ask them questions. Once the questions are all over between members of the public and members of, of the board, then we ask if there's any, any people who object or in favor of the application. At that oper- at that time, you have, you have three choices. You can get up and say, I'm in favor of it. You can get up and say, I'm against it.
Okay.
Or you can, or you can go outside and get yourself a soda. Okay?
I could choose two of those three. Okay.
All right. So, should we proceed with the application, and then, once this is all over, you can make your presentation? Because I don't want to make this presentation now, when we're still hearing the testimony from the, from the applicant.
Oh, I, I apologize, sir. I only came up-
No, 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 no. I thought, based on what I first heard, I, I, first of all, I didn't think you were here, and second of all, I thought this had all been resolved.
Right, if you said everything's good with me, we're good to go.
Yeah.
Sure. If it's not good with you, then it's a bigger conversation. So, so here's what I would request then, because my, the first time, and, and, you know, the architect, in the test of this, the first time I saw this was today. Uh, you all got, if you would just oblige me for one second, sir. Uh, you all got this ten days in advance. We had a conversation. I thought I would at least have some advance notice, but I, I, I wasn't given at least that courtesy, and I think that we could probably work some of the things out, but, uh, the gentleman came to my home, my wife made him coffee, we saw everything, but that was the la- that was the only conversation we had before having a conversation this morning.
Yeah, I think we got to carry this case.
So, so what the chairman's saying is to give you more time to resolve?
I don't want to resolve it here tonight. I don't have time.
I understand, sir.
Okay, I don't have time. I got a room full of people.
I understand.
Which may be more people than I am capable of handling, and, uh, at this point, when can we carry this case? So can I just try one thing to make sure, the plans that are being presented, they're worth looking at, supposedly approved at this point, okay? You have, you have not resolved some issues you haven't, uh-
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so, that issue's still open, that's what the chairman, uh, given. We're not going to hear this case without issue of the floor. You guys get it resolved, we come back.
Is it, is it possible?
Also, also, just because you are objected to it, doesn't mean we are going along with your-
I understand, sir.
Just to get down on the record.
I, I wholeheartedly understand, and I appreciate everything that you all do. Would, would it be possible for us to step out, because we haven't had an opportunity to speak?
You can do whatever, you can do whatever you like, but I'm carrying this case to another meeting.
So what they're going to do is give you more time?
Understood.
Work it out, and, and both parties agree, just makes it easier the next time.
June seventh.
Thank you, sir.
June seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
With all extensions?
Members of the public, this case is being carried to June seventh. If you're here for this case, this is the only notice you're going to receive. Um, we, we, there's no further notice required. You will give us an extension through June thirtieth. And, uh, do I have a motion to that effect?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Provide those extensions, correct?
See you on June seventh.
Yes, you'll, on, just on the record, you will give those extensions. Thanks, sir. But, but this will be easier, because if you, if you resolve it, you, you come here, it's, it's just cleaner.
Okay.
And you, and you don't, if, if there's issues, that you don't, you don't know what the board could do.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that this wasn't done before tonight. Okay, I'm just flabbergasted, I'm sorry.
I, I am, well, sir, but the first option-
No, look, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to you, I'm not saying to you, okay? I'm saying to the applicant, I'm surprised this was not resolved before tonight. Nora?
Yes.
Um, Greenfield, I looked at my, my file drawer. I did not see that case. Was it, was it?
You have additional information tonight, would you have in your package?
I have the additional information tonight's package?
Yeah, you have all, all things.
Okay, let's call case, uh, um, twenty-two sixty-six, Robert Greenfield.
Sir, you were previously sworn, correct? And you're still under that oath, you understand that? I think you have a seat, please talk in the microphone.
People with him.
More common.
You can proceed. You didn't, you can proceed with your testimony. You were bringing us additional information?
Yeah, so basically, last time I was here, uh, there was an issue with the dimensions. I had the, uh, the company that's going to build the shed, give me a, an updated drawing with newer dimensions. Basically, it's keeping everything the same. The only thing that's changing is the length. So again, we're going, um, ten by ten by forty.
I don't believe that's-
As opposed to last time, which was, I think, ten by twelve by forty.
What is the purpose of this shed?
Storage.
So he, he has a, a company, it's an electronics company or a computer company, and you store some-
Stuff.
Materials in that shed?
Materials, supplies.
And there currently is a shed, but you're going longer on that shed. It's on the side of the driveway?
So, I, I have a corner lot, it's on the corner of Lake Shore and Carlstadt, and that, uh, lot has two driveways, one coming off of Lake Shore, one coming off Carlstadt. The one coming off Carlstadt has a shed. It's currently there, there's an eyesore. Uh, basically, what I want to do is take that down and put up, uh, a longer unit. Same height, same width, just longer.
Did we agree to a modification of the setback, side yard setback at the last meeting to three feet? Is that correct?
Yes. That's existing, isn't it?
Currently, it's about three feet six inches.
Okay. And, um, um, if I'm repeating the question from the last meeting, have you discussed this with your neighbors? Do you have any neighbors? Neighbors have any problems?
The two most affected direct neighbors that are actually here tonight, um, I've explained to them what I'm looking to do.
Mm-hmm.
And I've not gotten, or at least in my feeling, I don't feel there was any objection, but there are.
But wasn't there, didn't we have some kind of information that the business was being run out of the, out of the property?
I was asked if I was running stuff out of there, but it's just a storage. The lady that's not here tonight asked me about if I was going to work out of there, and the answer is no.
So if we went on and looked at your business address, it would not be the address that's under consideration now?
Oh, it's listed there, but that's just for mailing purposes. Do I have people coming to the house? No. I don't know if that's a question.
No, the question is, is the business being run out of the house?
The bookkeeping is. Working on some computers is, but-
So that's kind of yes?
Okay.
Okay.
How come the zoning officer never questioned that?
I don't know.
You say there's no employees coming to this property?
There, there's, it's just me.
Just you.
Just me.
And I have no problem, if you're just storing some material and you're running, you have an office in your house, that's, in my opinion, is not running a business out of your house. Running a business out of your house is, is if you have people coming six times a day to pick up goods, and that, that's not. That's not happening. So, for all intents and purposes, the neighborhood probably doesn't even, doesn't even know you have a business, right? Do you get an occasional delivery in the garage? Is that, no?
It's working from home. That's all we, we all do.
Well, yeah, but it, if, if you read the rules and regulations, it's not that simple.
I get it.
Not that simple.
Functionally.
Functionally, yes, yes.
But you, you also go off, off, off-site to, a lot of customers are, I think, right?
Indeed, yes.
What are going to be the colors of this shed?
Um, probably beige.
What color is your color? What color is your house?
Yellowish beige.
Any reason it can't be the same color?
Not a very good color.
Good answer.
They might want you to change their house color.
I'm, I'm, that's, I'm working on that.
The other thing is, this thing's forty feet long with no windows.
I'm sorry?
This thing is forty feet long with no windows. Do you think you should put some windows in?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'll, I'll put some windows in there, I guess.
I mean, just to get light in there.
I'll put some lights in there, too.
Yeah. Okay. It's pretty ugly.
So the, the original problem was, was the width was shown as twelve, uh, feet six inches, but now it's been corrected to ten feet.
So he's made that modification in our request, right?
That's, that's correct. And, and the driveway, um, is ten feet, I, I believe, so it would fit right into the driveway where the existing shed was.
They'll put some windows on it.
When I'm just a little, give it a little- So you have to have a bigger shed to store your stuff for your business, but you don't do business out there.
I'd need a bigger shed so I can stop paying extra space storage for keeping stuff there.
So you're now paying a separate location for stuff for your business?
I've been, yes.
Okay, now you're bringing it all there, but you're not running the business out of there.
I'm sorry?
You're bringing it there, but you're not running the business out of there. You just store stuff.
I keep my inventory there.
Davey, Davey, a number of years ago, we had an application for a man who had a couple of ice cream trucks.
Yeah.
Okay, and if you want to talk about running a business out of a house in the lower Lake High Water, it was clearly, without a doubt, running a business, because he did everything, and he stored all this stuff, and he kept his trucks on the property, okay? And when we tried to, to question it, we couldn't, there was nothing you could do. This is, this is de minimis, completely. Very de minimis. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions on this witness, of, of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none.
To the left.
Um, please come up. Please come up. You have a question? Come up and use the microphone, you got to identify yourself.
I have nothing to do with-
You have nothing to do with him?
However.
Is it on this application, ma'am?
No. I just have a question for him. Why would you want windows in your shed, so people can see what you have in?
All right, ma'am, for the record, excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, for the record, can you state, ma'am, can you state your name?
You're going to say it into the microphone, please.
No, no, that's.
G E A N.
G, 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 you saw? G E A N.
G E A N, N, E.
Okay. And your, uh, where do you live, your residence? I, I know, but.
But you, but this is a formal proceeding, this is not, uh, Sunday at the ladies' club, okay? You want to, you want to just withdraw? You want to withdraw your applicant, you withdraw your question, you don't want to ask a question? Thank you. For those of you in the audience who may have noticed, the chairman's in a good mood tonight.
Slightly better than usual.
Let's move ahead. Be careful. Be careful. Okay. All right. Any other, no, um, if any other members have questions, please come forward. Don't, don't talk from back there. Come up and use the microphone, first thing is your name and your address.
Robert Fioretti, adjacent neighbor. The only, uh, question I had, because.
I used to say Fioretti, I'm sorry.
F I O R E T T I.
Thank you.
Uh, we, in, in the last meeting, we were talking about, um, stormwater runoff and different things. And since this is, um, you know, we only get our notice one time, you don't get any paperwork after that. I don't, I was just wondering if there was any, like, adjustments to the plan or the letter from the engineer? That's something that I should have to get publicly, you know, go to the engineer and ask for that?
If we approve, if we approve this, it'll be subject to the township engineer stormwater approval.
Yep.
If, whatever, whatever has to be, has to be.
I'm uphill anyway, so it's not really.
There, there is a, just for the record, there's a January 13th, 2023 letter from the town engineer requiring certain, um, things to be done with regarding the drainage.
Yeah.
So I was going to ask.
That will stand.
I was going to ask you if you are negatively affected by rainwater runoff, but if you're uphill, probably not.
The, the shed is right on the property line, so that roof line, but I, I think we have stone there, I'm not really overly concerned, it's just more a curiosity question.
Gotcha.
If there's more, I guess Rob has to go through design on that then, or, and this is just an approval, or if that was already designed?
He has to comply with the engineer's.
Yeah, got it.
Questions?
Okay.
You're aware of that, right?
As, as a follow-up to that, uh, part of the recent submitted packet, um, I did meet with the town engineer. That letter that was referenced to, I didn't know about that letter until that last meeting. Um, and I met with him and even he was surprised, he said that he didn't actually do the inspection, it was someone else who did it, it just has his name on it. We had discussed it and basically what we came up with was that the roof is going to have gutters and it's going to have downspouts leading into rain barriers. And that's how we're going to mitigate the stormwater problem.
So, so right now you have that letter, so it's going to be subject to that letter unless he modifies it? So if he signs off it, then that's fine, but right now, of record is that letter.
Okay. Now he can modify that as part of his approval process.
And then the only other thing, I mean, it sounds like you already, my objection was the 12 foot six, because that was going to come closer to our fence line. And if that's staying in that 10 foot footprint, then there's, I, I have no objection.
The testimony is he reduced it to 10 foot instead of 12, six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from, from the public? Nothing else you'd like to add, right?
We have another question.
Ma'am, for the record, can you state your name?
Kathy Riley. I'm at 15 Dorothy Road, which is one street over. I'm uphill, three houses in, and I, my property is diagonal.
You're the first person that did it right tonight. Everyone, when you come up here, follow Ms. Riley.
Oh, thanks. So my original objection was height, because from my.
Do you have a question of him?
I, he did say that the height was 10 feet, going to be the same at 10 feet. And he told me with the pitch of the roof, it's 10 feet eight inches, so.
Is that your question? Is it 10 feet eight inches?
Uh, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, my question is the length and how much of the backyard that it's going to take up? Because I, my understanding was it's already over the variance for the back coverage of the backyard, so.
To my understanding, it's not over the variance. Um, and the fact that that was an existing structure when I moved in, I would have to assume that I couldn't have moved in without getting a CO, and I would have got a CO if that wasn't already authorized. Basically, all I'm doing is extending what's there by 25.
So the length of it now is what?
15 feet.
15?
Mm-hmm.
So you're going to 40?
40 feet, yes.
So how much of the backyard does that take up? Does it take up three quarters of the property? Like it just, it's not even like a shed, it's like another building.
It's a storage unit, yes.
It just seems really large.
It is.
It is, yes. So from my vantage point, I'm going to look at over the roof a bit, and that impacts my weight.
Well, anything that you would be looking at over that would be my house. It's not going to be higher than my house, and the only thing in front of my hat between what's going to be and the lake is my house. So if my house has been blocking your view now, this, since it's not going to be higher, won't be blocking it either.
But I'm up three houses, so I'm looking down at the property, I don't really see your, your house. If my view of the lake is more over the glass, I'm directly behind the house.
So you're, you're already looking over the roof?
I'm already looking over the roof.
Right, so it's not going to be higher, it's not going to be higher. It might be a couple inches higher.
Yeah, I got it.
But.
Also, what he said is not true. He didn't need to get another CO when he bought the house, and you can't assume that what was there was approved. You get a CO when you get the house originally, but there's no CO reinspection on sale of the house. So that, that's just not, that's not true.
It's the purchaser's obligation to come to the zoning department and make sure everything's, uh, within code.
But to your point, you, you are, you are putting a shed in that doesn't exceed the lot impervious coverage of your lot, correct? Okay. So can you make that shed just a bit, bit smaller so you don't have to get that variance? Couldn't you make it 35 feet long and you'd be cool?
I, I think 35 would, I'd still have to be here for 35 feet.
Based on what?
Yeah, the amount of coffee she was on the way. Well.
Pardon?
Looking at the variance stuff.
Well, I think, I think maybe I have a couple of feet of leeway without having to actually be here.
What I don't understand is you currently have 41% impervious coverage. You're adding 40, I mean, 25 feet to the shed.
Mm-hmm.
And you're only increasing your impervious coverage by 4%, that makes no sense to me.
Uh, I'm sorry?
How big is your lot?
I, I don't actually know.
About 600 square feet?
You got a survey there?
I do.
Is that in 250 square feet? I'd say you've got 15.
You actually say on here, just wait, tell me?
Should.
As Ms. Chadwick said, you're adding 250 square feet of coverage.
You'd have to have one of these crazy shaped lots, right?
He does have a crazy shaped lot, right?
Yeah.
Now these 8,000 square feet.
8,000.
8,000?
Yeah.
So what's, what's 250 o, into 8,000, who's got the calculator?
I'm sorry, what was it?
250 o, 8,000.
250 from divided by 8,000?
About 3%.
Yeah.
I'm on 3.1.
Something like that.
3.125.
So if you took off, that's what you're adding.
Right.
That's what you're adding here.
We got to move on with the chairman.
It's not a, it's, it does not appear to be a significant increase in the way it's laid out on the property. Where, in relationship to his house, where exactly is your house? You're not on Lake Shore Drive.
I'm on Dorothy.
You're on Dorothy.
Which is parallel to Carlstadt.
My house is between Carlstadt and Dorothy. On, on Lake Shore.
On the corner of Carlstadt.
And which house is yours on Dorothy, first, second house, second?
Mr. Fioretti's house is right next to Rob going up Carlstadt. And my house is right behind Mr. Fioretti's.
So you're the second house from Lake Shore Drive? Is your backyard butt onto Mr., uh?
No, it actually butts onto Mr. Fioretti's. But my, my view that's being impaired is diagonal over the shed that Mr. Greenfield is using. Some question.
But it's no higher than what's already there? He's not blocking the lake, is he, from your, 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 your viewpoint? You, you, he's, he's not blocking your, your view of the lake, is he?
No, I look over it, so my original objection was.
You look over, you, your house fronts on Dorothy.
Yeah, she's above him.
And what?
I do have a picture.
What, I don't want to see any pictures.
Okay.
What, what, if I'm standing on the corner of Lake Shore and Dorothy and I start walking up Dorothy, how many houses on the left before I get to yours?
Three.
You're the third house?
Yes.
You have no, you have no? I can't, I can't say that. Are you sure you're, you're getting a? I'm sorry. All right, what's your other question? Do you have any other questions of him?
I don't.
Okay. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. I was going to make an announcement, um, that the, um, fire inspector's on his way over to determine if we're in, in excessive capacity. So as soon as he comes over, we're going to either count heads or count feet and divide by two, so.
Well, we have two cases, right?
Excuse me?
There may be different, yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I can't hold any case in here if I'm exceeding capacity, okay? All right, um, is there anything else you'd like to add? Okay, at this point, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Speak in objection. Does anybody want to speak in objection to this application? No. Anybody, any member of the public who wish to speak in favor of this application? I hear none and see none. Do we need to go into conference or can we come to a decision? Do I have a motion to go to conference? Is there a second?
Second.
Well, any discussion, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, who wants to start?
My biggest concern right now is we're putting a facility or a building on a residential area that almost looks starvation, and I wish it could be smaller.
Mr. Ready?
Yeah, similar concern, uh, if you can reduce instead of 40 feet to 35, something like that, 50 to 35, or 40, 10, 10 feet lesser than.
I agree with Davey. I think you're adding on to a house to make a business bigger. And I have concerns.
I, I'm along with that thought too, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of what it looks like in comparison to the house, it just looks like, uh, what you said, adding on to the house property for business.
Yeah, this may, may be a technicality, but I don't understand how we're calling this a detached garage. Honestly. And I, and I don't want anyone to get away with that. It's not a garage, it's not functioning as a garage, doesn't look like a garage. Um, and, and the size is the biggest concern for me.
If it means anything, I'm still. Excuse me? You can't talk right now. Thank you.
I agree that, uh, there's a, you know, big addition, 250 square feet for the business. And I'm not too sure there will be no visitors, and it, it's a, the size is pretty big for the, just storage and, uh, having an office over there. I'm concerned about that.
Is that everybody? Um, I'm going to give you two options at this point. Option number one is we're going to go to a vote. And if you can count, you need four affirmative votes. Or I'll let you carry this case to a future date and you can rework this, rethink it, you can withdraw it, or you can come back and say, I want the vote, and then go to court. All right? Well, you could sue us, sure, if we turn you down, we could sue you, we could sue you, we're not going to sue you.
You could appeal it.
You can, you can, you can appeal the decision to the, to the, to the courts. You don't have a planner, you don't have an attorney, don't have an architect, you're here by yourself, you're at a big disadvantage. Big, big, big disadvantage. So do you want to carry this case to a future date?
I guess so.
Okay.
Is there a number you guys would be satisfied with?
All these extensions.
You can't tell you that.
I'm here in 35 feet.
I, I would suggest you talk to your neighbors who had objection.
You, you got, you got objections to people are saying that this is not a garage, it's a business. So.
It's not, I said that under oath.
Why don't you sit down with your neighbors and see whether you can find a common ground? Or contact a professional who might give you some professional advice. We cannot give you professional advice. Okay, I'm sorry. Are you willing to carry this case and give us whatever extensions are necessary? And no further notice, no further notice, ladies and gentlemen over there. They're not paying attention. What day are we carrying this case to, uh?
July 12th.
July 12th, okay, we're going to carry, carry this case to July 12th without further notice and with whatever extensions are required, this is the only notice you're going to get. If you want to stay in contact with this case, you can always call Nora and see if there's been updated plans submitted, because he's got to submit plans 10 days prior to the effort.
Rob, I speak to you.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. See you then. All righty, then we move on. Who's the word? He's on his way.
26.
I hope I don't get, get arrested for violating. Did anybody go in there just?
23.
No, well, but, did you? What do you got? 123? Yeah, you got people on the hallway. And we lose.
Last time we had about the journey, there had been a number of objectors here, so maybe after we hear them, it will lighten up some.
Okay.
I mean, maybe the putting stone, some of that people, they have to go outside until the others leave, maybe, you know.
Probably don't want to give up their seats, Nora.
Well, maybe raise a hand. Maybe raise a hand, the objectors from, about the journey, if you have any deal.
Yeah. How many are here for About the Journey application?
Just like 20 people.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to make a, a, another warning, okay? If the fire instructor comes and we're okay as we are, we're going to proceed. We now have a case, it's starting at 8:15, because it's an hour and 45 minutes. My experience with a case that has objectors is never over in less than two hours. So it could very well be that we're going to hear all About the Journey and never get to the Putting Stone case. But I, I have no guarantees, okay? I have no guarantees, I have no guarantees about anything in life, except that I pay my taxes. And I did that yesterday. Okay, case 2270, All About the Journey LLC. It's a deep, it's a site plan with D variance to operate a behavioral therapy office.
Nora, wish us, uh, glad to be on the block with the Eagle.
Um, it might be better over here.
But you know, Nora, then again, maybe over here it would be better. Now, now.
You know, I'm drinking my smart water and then it's, I need to have a drink.
I was ready to meet my maker. Did you have that, Rob? The monitor shot? Oh, yeah. Okay, moving ahead.
Good evening, everybody, Stephen Tombalackian from Wiener Law Group on behalf of the applicant, All About the Journey. Uh, we're here tonight, uh, Chairman Crickley, uh, decided for site plan approval and, uh, use variance relief um, for the property that's at 1035 Littleton, uh, block 208, lot 85, uh, which is in the Arthur Residential District. We're here tonight to repurpose that building, um, for. We're here tonight to repurpose that building, um, for its contract purchaser, who's to my right, who wants to use that building, not as a house, but as a business, where she's gonna provide occup, uh, therapy for persons with autism and other similar type, uh, uh, conditions. Uh, so we're, we're gonna be hearing a lot about that use tonight. Um, it's a unique use. It's very unique. Uh, there's a demand for it, you're gonna hear about that as well tonight. So just to sum up where I'm going with this case, we're gonna hear from Mary Jo Wallico, who's the applicant, the owner of All About the Journey. Then we're gonna hear briefly, really, from Donna Bullock, our site engineer, who's gonna explain what site changes are being proposed, which, because of the Morris County Planning Board report, very few site changes are being proposed. We had to eliminate one of the two curb cuts for the site, uh, so the, the site will really largely remain as is. And, uh, last but not least, John McDonough, our professional planner, will, will bring it all home, explain the planning rationales, uh, for the use variance, uh, slot for this. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce my first witness.
I'm just, I'm not telling you how to run your case or anything, but are you gonna discuss the previous variances that we've granted on this property?
John McDonough will.
Fine, that's fine. That's fine.
He probably handled it.
Uh, my, my memory serves me correct, yes, you're correct.
John will.
Okay.
May I ask you to raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about the before the board's true stuff you got? And for the record, can you spell, spell and state your name?
Sure, it's Mary Jo Wallico, and it's W-A-L-I-L-K-O.
And you're the owner of the, uh...
I'm the sole owner of All About the Journey, yes.
You've been sworn, please just talk into the microphone.
Now, Mary Jo, um, please introduce yourself to the board. Tell it, tell them who you are, what you do, and, and then we'll get to why you're interested in purchasing this property to operate your business.
Okay. So my name, I said, Mary Jo Wallico. I started my journey, uh, specifically with autism community about twenty-two years ago, when my son, who's now twenty-four, was diagnosed with autism. That has developed now from not knowing anything about that into a career, um, that, to help the people who do have autism. Now, my son, at that time, twenty-two years ago, I wanted to make sure that you understand that those numbers were one in seventeen thousand. The current rate is one in thirty-four in New Jersey. There is a dramatic increase in autism. The perspective, if the rates continue, we're gonna be looking at about twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, one in every two. So this is a, a huge need that is not always being met. Um, my company is focused on the behavioral therapy. Um, there is, uh, down the street, about three houses, a, a, a physical therapy center, and they also receive things like occupational therapy and speech therapy, but that's not what we do. We focus on the, the physical, the, uh, behavioral therapy. Um, what we are looking for is to be able to make these people, uh, more independent, make them have pride, have them involved in our community. Um, I grew up in Parsippany, one of the thing, in Lake Parsippany, actually, and one of the things that I always loved about our community was the fact that it is so diverse and so, so accepting. And that's why I wanted to bring my company back into, into this, uh, particular town. Um, we were looking to do something very unique. Currently, um, adults, uh, who go out into the, uh, they go through, sorry, children go through to the, to adulthood, till the age of twenty-one, in the school districts. After that, the need dramatically drops. Keep in mind, like I said, one in seventeen thousand, these are the kids, people who are currently in that twenty-to-thirty range, which is, uh, year-old range, which is what our plan currently is for this house, is to, to help them. They would not be in the home all the time. They would be also in the community a lot. Um, we specifically sought out this type of a project because, um, a lot of the adults are, are so underserviced that they are placed in, um, things like, I call it a gym, a cafeteria, but, you know, where they're just tables and tables of adults sitting there and doing things like, uh, playing cards or checkers, but there's not real value in that. Our belief is that each and every adult that we service can be a productive member of society. They can have a place that they can go to and they feel welcome, that they can hang out with their friends and, and be able to do what they like to do. So we sought out this particular type of, um, facility versus a, um, you know, a basement of a church or things like that.
Okay, so, okay, so what, where you currently operate, and will this facility, if approved and you will proceed with the purchase, uh, will it be complementing your other facility?
Uh, yeah, we, we currently are housed, um, the adults in Dover, New Jersey, and we are part of a, of a church at the moment, but most of our time is spent out in the community. So having this is gonna be, you know, a place where they could go in and do a lot of the things we can't do now. We do not have the ability to have a bedroom set up so they can learn, and washer and dryer, where they can learn, you know, how to do those particular skills themselves. We do not have the ability to be able to have a place for them to hang out that's theirs, you know, and then learn how to socially interact appropriately. Um, one of the things that we have found a huge part of the need is, this is a spectrum, okay? So you have some who are also intellectually disabled, but we have a lot that are not. So they're able to go through the school systems and they're able to function, but then we get to socialization, and they can't. They don't know how to make friends, they don't know how to hang out, they don't know how to, you know, go to their family picnics and go to their family parties and be part of that. That's what we're, you know, looking to teach them and why we sought out a house in particular.
So explain to the board, what exactly will go on inside the house?
Well, the, the lower level is basically gonna be designated to, towards that socialization component we talked about, and also, um, you know, simple activities. So we're going to have, um, you know, puzzles and games like we were talking about, but we're also gonna have those that are gonna learn how to dance, how to sing, how to do karaoke, how to, um, go outside and, uh, you know, be there and play volleyball or something like that. I mean, the volleyball obviously is adapted for them, but things like that. Our upper area is more designated towards life skills and vocational skills. Uh, some of our students now, or adults, are out into the community. Um, they actually run their own little coffee cart, and they go from location to location. Um, the orders are, are brought in on a computer system, they make the baked goods, they make whatever, and they send that out. So some of them go out into the community and they're working, they're folding pizza boxes, they're going out and doing car washes, different things and activities. So we won't be in the home all day long. Our, our whole goal is to try to get them out into the community and working.
When you say "we," talk about who your staff is. How many staff per client and that type of, so the board knows, kind of can anticipate what the process is.
Absolutely. One of the things that makes us unique is there's a, a community, a group called DDD, most of the people know about the Developmental Disability Program, and there, their ratio is one, roughly one to eight. Our ratios are one to one. So we actually have intensive time with the students, and our, our therapists get to know them and are able to help them and then back off and let them, if they need help, they guide it and they back off. So we're, they're able to gear that specifically so that the adults truly learn the skills. Um, our, we have a behaviorist, a licensed VA, which is a board-certified behavioral analyst, who is in charge of the program, and then all of my therapists are registered behavioral technicians, meaning that they have advanced time and study for this. So this is not somebody that we're...
Mark, is this a licensed facility?
It, we have, they have, um, they're certified by the Board of Education, but we do not require it to be licensed.
No state license.
No, no state license.
You say there's no state license. You don't go to the, um...
Department of Health?
No, it's not the...
DDD. You don't get any funding from DDD?
Uh, we don't at this time. We have applied for that as an option, but again, we will not have those ratios. Most of all of our, um, payments and everything come from insurance companies.
Insurance companies?
Yes. Or private pay. We have, so we don't do that.
How many clients at a time are in the facility?
It, it would vary at different times. Um, we currently have five students that we deal with. Um, I would say absolutely at any one time, I can't see more than, um, maybe, I don't know, maybe twenty tops, but that doesn't mean that they're gonna be there all at the same time.
Would, would that be twenty, um, clients?
Clients.
And then twenty...
Twenty therapists, yes.
So you're after forty people in...
That would be the, like, the max I can probably see going through there, yes. But, I remember, some of those may be outside, some of those may be out in the community, you know, you know, typically, I, I kind of tried to ballpark it with about four...
So are you gonna go for parking? I guess the planner...
Parking is taken care of at our other facilities, and they will be shuttled.
So everybody, your clients all get there, how?
They get there by the parents. Most of these clients, unfortunately, that's where they end up. They're, they're with their parents, living for life, so they're at home. So their clients, uh, we have already planned on that with traffic to stagger our hours for them. So somebody may, I mean, we might have three come in at nine o'clock, three at nine fifteen, because the parents literally pull in, drop off, and they leave.
Is it always a one-to-one ratio?
Always. Always. And the only exception that would be for that might be is if we switch to a total DDD, which it's not in like...
What's a DDD?
Division of Disabled Disabilities, or Disabilities, I forget. Developments...
Developmental Disabilities.
I'm just kidding now. Um, but we're really not, even with that, like I said, their ratios are much larger. We are never gonna have that. It, I, I'm a mom. If I wouldn't do this with my own son, I would not do this with him.
I, I wanna go back to your license. Currently, you have a facility where?
We have a, uh, we are located with the adults in, um, St. John's Church in Dover.
Okay.
We have two children's facilities, one inside Bridges to Learning in Rockaway, and then the other one's over in Cedar Knolls.
Is this one gonna be totally adult?
My, I, at this time, yes, that is my only plan.
All right, and you do not have a license from the State Department of Health?
Correct.
Can I, can you just give us...
It's just, it's because it's behavioral health, it doesn't require that. I just don't know.
I've dealt with a number of these, and they all had licenses, choke horns.
Can you tell us about your education experience and your licensing?
I do not have a license. I'm a bus, just a business owner of this. And I went to school at Ramapo County College for a psychology degree, and then I have gone on and I have worked with, um, uh, children since I was eight, but then I broke away from that, and then when my son happened, I then went back and I was a crisis prevention person for, uh, working with autistic adults and children, and also as a, an aide in schools and, and also a, uh, school teacher. But I hire the professionals that have the license.
And they have, they all have licenses?
Absolutely. All of the, the, uh, BCBAs, which are board-certified behavioral analysts.
Okay.
They're in charge of, uh, doing the evaluation of the adults, doing the treatment plans, preventing it to the insurance company, and, uh, you know, all of that.
I'm not sure if I should sit on this case. I do sit on a board of, of a outfit that runs similar programs, so, and I have a grandson that's in the exact target audience you're speaking of. Having said that, I would question why you wanna go into a residential area for this service right now, because frankly, uh, my concern for the neighbors would be serving the people you need, and they need servicing. It's a big on-met need. Couldn't agree with you more. But I believe in this town, we have some other facilities that could really serve you and your clientele much better than converting a residential area where you're gonna have a lot of frequency of visitation of people, your staff and what else. Why, why are you focusing on a residential area right now? What is your decision?
Well, part of that was the fact that we want them to be in the community and be around and be a home.
We want them to. We have a lot of group homes in our town.
We do have group homes. That, that's a different scenario than what we do.
I understand.
So that's, that's okay. Um, but we want them to have a place that's theirs and that they feel at home and being part of...
But they're not gonna live there. They're gonna come every day.
They are not, nobody is gonna stay overnight. Uh, we're probably one of the easiest neighbors, 'cause we're planning to be there Monday to Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, with an occasional, like, okay, we might have occasional, like, in the summer, we might have, you know, a family night, a social night, 'cause that's part of it. We may have an occasional, hey, bring your families and, you know, have it on a Saturday. But we don't take, um, this for granted at all, and we, and we look specifically for this type of thing. We want them to feel like this is theirs, and it's not a business. This is their lives.
Okay. And like you say, though, the majority of your clientele do live at home with parents right now.
They do.
So they have a home.
They have a home.
Where they can learn how to make a bed and do the washing and stuff like that.
You would hope so, but, but I...
A lot of them, I understand.
If I'm reaching at the point of twenty years old and twenty-five and teaching...
I understand. It's a big on-met need. Okay.
The, the degree of autism, there's all sorts of different categories.
Yes.
Are you taking all spectrum?
Um, right now, everything that we, the people that I have currently are moderate to, um, high. That's the best way I could describe it to you. They are functional.
Moderate to high functionality?
Yes.
Okay.
They're the old Asperger's people.
Well, the high would be, yes.
And Asperger's are no longer, if you realize that, right?
A what?
Asperger's no longer exist.
It's all?
They're all on the...
It's all under autism spectrum.
Okay.
So how far along do you have a schedule of who's gonna be there on what days so you keep that one-to-one ratio? Do you have, 'cause you say you might have twenty people there, twenty clients at one point, then you need twenty staff members. How far in advance do you know how many are gonna be there?
Um, well, we would know, right now, it's as they call. Um, we have not posted anything that we are, you know, out there to do this yet. But we would start with any one of them, and just as how we do it now, they can go on a waiting list, we start, we'll go through the process, we'll let one in. We'll see how that gets, let two, I mean, obviously, right now, we have five. I know we could take five people.
So there's, so you have a, a set clientele?
Yeah, we take it and, and we plan for it. And when we start to realize that this is gonna get too big, we're gonna start looking for, you know, another locale.
I'm, and I guess maybe my other point to follow up on what Davey was saying about location, Littleton Road's pretty busy, right?
Right.
So, you know, there's a lot of traffic out there, so, you know, just to put it out there, if somebody walks out, I know they're high-functioning and all that, there's a lot of traffic out there, if something, you know, somebody get, takes an eye off somebody, uh, one of my good friends, his son is autistic, and he, it's, it's, it's a worrisome situation on our road.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just a thought I have in my head as well.
And one of the things we did take into consideration about that was, was, um, planning for that was a fence to go around the property, so they couldn't just run out into the road. And keeping that into, one of the things I, I strived for with this and planning was to keep everything the same. Like, we're not putting up walls inside of the home, we're not putting up any, just the big facilities outside, you know, we're not looking for that. We're looking to keep that character and that to be part of, of who we are.
I, I have a question for you.
Sure.
You started with, uh, Dover, that's the facility you have in Dover?
Correct.
Okay, and then you also mentioned Rockaway and Cedar Knolls?
Correct.
So you have three, total three facilities?
Yes, two are children, one is adult.
And total, how many clients in the three facilities?
I would say probably, I'll see, we have five in the adults, and, um, the Cedar Knolls I would say probably, let me see, we have five in the adults and the Cedar Knolls just has one at this time. And then I have seven, seven or eight in the Rockaway.
Do you plan to close any facility when you move here or?
The only, the only, the only plan we have is to move our, from Dover to here. So it's the five adults. They're the only ones coming.
Where is the facility in Rockaway and Cedar Knolls? Is that in some house or is it?
No, they are inside, we purposely chose that to be inside of a daycare for both of those because those, those children are under the age of school years that we work with. So we want them in a, in a location that they have neurotypical peers to help model. And that's one of the things that we hope that we will be able to do is to, you know, encourage our, our high school students to come for an hour after school and, and work with our adults.
In all those locations, you have one-to-one ratio?
Correct. Yeah, and we actually, and that one-to-one is therapists. We do have the behaviorists that are in addition to.
Do you have any school-aged clients?
I'm sorry?
Any school-aged clients?
Yes, we do.
And who sends them to you, the districts or just the families privately?
No, that comes through the families.
I guess I have.
We are, we are able to take that if the school district so chooses. We're, you know, we are covered as an approved state vendor.
At this facility in Precipiny or?
No, no, just in general, what we talked about.
So from another standpoint, I'm thinking about parking. If you do have, say you have 10 or 20 at the most, but you have 10 clients, you're going to need spots for 10 behavioral cars, right?
Uh, no, we will not on this property.
So why don't you explain to the board what your idea is in terms of how are your employees going to get to work every morning?
They're going to be shuttled. They have, we have the facilities now, even including the one in Dover, that we can maintain the parking for them, that they're already there. We have, we have cars that we, or vans, I should say, that we use to shuttle our adults around now to go out into the community. And that's how we plan on picking up and dropping off our staff.
So they'll park in Dover and you'll pick them up and bring them down?
Dover, Rockaway, whatever.
So the onsite spaces that are, those are Precipiny, who is going to park in those spaces?
Those are primarily set for our parents to do drop-off and pickup, our, our clinical director and myself, who will go back and forth between all the locations. That's what.
So you guys drive the van or do you have a separate driver?
We have a separate driver. Sometimes I have.
Only the employees get shuttled, not the client?
No, the clients are dropped off and picked up by their parents.
And do the parents hang out there?
No.
This gives them a little bit of a respite, too?
Yes.
In your, just so I can kind of gauge where on the spectrum your clients fall, is do you, how often do you have ambulance or police calls to restrain?
We are, we are certified to restrain. We have never restrained. And I've been in businesses 2015.
How often does a client wander off?
I've never had that situation. Again, because they're one-to-one, it's really hard to wander off. You know, that's their only job is to be there with, with that client.
So there'll be no vans parked on the property, correct?
I mean, if we're there, like if we're, we've shuttled in and then the van's there to, you know, wait for a client or wait for a group to come out and then leave, that would be the plan.
And what's the size of these vans?
Um, there's, they're minivans.
Like a?
Not, not even a 15-passenger yet.
Like a?
Well, because I'm hoping that we can, I'd rather do a 15-passenger van than.
Where's that, is that van going to stay overnight at this?
It does not have to, no.
Well, you got to tell me right now because it's going to be going into the resolution. Where, where will the vans be parked overnight?
I mean, if, if it's allowable, I could do that. But honestly, I don't think it will because it's going to be.
You said you were going to pick up your instructors in Dover.
Correct. So really, I think I would end up having them parked up there.
Because the board wants to know because this is a residential neighborhood. They may not want vans parked.
And that's fine.
So no vans?
I want to go back to you get your clients from being a registered vendor with the local schools?
No, we, it kind of, the one thing about the special needs community, it's very tight. It's, it's small. And we all have, it, the word gets out if you've got, you know, good programs and they, they talk about it. All of our adults come from word of mouth. They don't come right now from schools. I don't have anybody that came from a school. Certain, we would never have somebody there that's being sent from a school during a school day and the school district's paying us. Because we're looking, this is looking for that, for those that are aging out of the school program.
This is the adult one, right?
Correct.
What is considered an adult? How old?
21 and over.
Well, most of the school districts will have their adults there to 21.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that a parent wouldn't pull them out at 20 or whatever. It might be that our program is more appropriate for their child.
How long of a day does a client usually stay?
Typically, they're, we get there at eight-thirty, they get there between eight-thirty and nine, and they're out usually by four. And then we leave by four-thirty. That gives us a chance to clean up straight and.
And the average client is there five days a week?
I would say right now, the average is. I do have some that are not there five days. I also have some that are only there ten to two.
Right. So is it all because of what insurance will pay for?
Some of it is, and some of it is a parent's. We, we tell them what the insurance approves, what they do after that.
Mary Jo, if, if a parent wanted to go to a competitor, if I can even use that word, what are the other closest comparable facilities to what you're proposing on Littleton?
Well, nobody really has what we're trying, what we're proposing that I'm aware of being in a, in a home that is not a group home. There are certainly, like, there's the Arkham Morris County. I know there's another group, I can't remember the name, but in Precipiny that does something similar. There's one in Denville that does similar to what we do where they go out to the community. They actually do have a house, but that's right off of, I don't remember the name of the road, I'm sorry. But there aren't, there aren't a lot that do that kind of situation. And that's what makes this unique.
Given it's a close-knit community and you kind of all know everybody, do you really feel there's a demand for this facility?
Oh, there's a huge demand. There's no question. I mean, when I talk these numbers, I mean, since 19, I can tell you this date because I don't have. From 2000 to 2016, we had a 500% increase in autism. In Precipiny alone, there's approximately 30, roughly 30 students within the district. And they have about 30 classrooms with about, between seven and 10 children, definitely in Precipiny.
I think Mary Jo has pretty much explained her proposals. Again, I'm going to have two additional witnesses, our engineer and John McDonough. And Mary Jo will be here for the remainder of the evening to, if you have any questions about.
We have to open it up to the public.
Do I just have one more question?
Absolutely.
Are they verbal or nonverbal?
Both. And those that are nonverbal, we, we're teaching them currently to use an on-metitive device to help them communicate or sign language.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to open, oh, I'm sorry. The occupancy that you suggested, 20 clients and 20 instructors. Do we know that this building is big enough to handle 40 people plus some extras?
I, I guess that might, you know, you might have to.
I don't think the plan is going to do it.
That might be something that, you know, somebody has to tell me. Otherwise, I can tell you that going through that, based on our experience of the rooms that we've had and, and, you know, bodies in there, you've got approximately, I want to say nine rooms off the top of my head. And we were planning around four adults, four to five adults per room. And that's kind of the ballpark we went with.
But again, that would be if everybody was onsite at the same time versus out in the community doing.
Yeah. And really, that's the biggest goal we have, is getting them out in the community. We really don't want to be there as much, obviously.
I have another question on that.
Sure.
So if you have 40 people there, some people are out in the community, you've got one van that drops the instructors off, then goes back to Dover. Are they going to be walking or taking Ubers into the community?
No, we will be bringing them back.
And how are you going to be bringing them?
The same van that took them will be the ones bringing them back.
The van's going to wind up standing most of the day. The van's going to be getting used most of the day.
Yes.
Bring instructors over.
Absolutely.
Go get clients, take clients wherever.
Drop them off, pick them up, drop them off.
End of the day, pick the employees home.
Correct.
So how many vans? I mean, it sounds like.
Right now, we have two. And again, those are SUV minivan, like, they're, that's what we have. And we can always do them in, you know, in shifts. Take, like, right now, if one of our vans, you know, is not available, they'll take half the clients over to the gym and then they'll come back and get the next half and then take that half up and bring them back and go back again.
The, the building itself, did anybody go through it, architect, the number of toilets, handicap accessibility, those types?
It is handicapped accessible. It has a ramp and it has, on the first floor, everything that they need, including a bathroom, sorry, including a bathroom. That goes right in, that's handicapped accessible.
But you didn't have an architect do a due diligence on it yet.
Unless the architect did, through there, it sounds.
But don't you, wouldn't you think you need to? If you have 40 people there, is one bathroom enough?
No, we have, there's two bathrooms there. And again, most of them are going to be out during the day. We have, we have one now. And when we all gotten it together, if you think about this, it's like having a party at your home. They're coming for a short period and they, you know, leaving.
Except you, you're having a business. And I'm sure there's regulation for what is required where.
Again, based on code, if the code limits the number, that's what we're limited to. And that goes back to the question of licensing with the state. Most, most facilities, you know, have certain requirements and they're more robust than just a residential home.
Right. So is there a state license that you're aware of?
Not, not aware of.
What I'm concerned is we get through this whole thing, the board approves it, you go to the building department for modifications and it blows up in your face.
Are you proposing to modify it? There's no, there's no proposed modifications. If the building department tells us.
You're going to have to get a certificate.
Oh, we'll get a CO.
So not to get a CO, you're going to have to meet some kind of standard.
Yeah, yeah.
And nobody's done any work on that other than, you know what the building has, but you're not an architect. I'm not an architect.
Typically, like, for example, if you pull it.
But I've dealt with this type of use, number of occasions, and people who were driven didn't do the due diligence on the fundamentals.
Look, I've gotten, like, separately in Paseo County, residential detox center. And that is, you got to get a state license, the state approves the architecture. It's a very.
Excuse, excuse me. I've been informed by the fire marshal that we cannot continue this meeting with the number of people that's in this room. I can tell you two things. One, we're never going to get to Puttingstone tonight. So if the Puttingstone people would like to go home and watch some TV and so we can hear this other case, because I know once the Puttingstone people leave, we will be under the number.
Joe, were you here for Puttingstone?
Yeah.
Do you want, do you want to hand your application to parents so I can continue? Pass the, pass the mic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neil, if you're a fellow Neil Ruchirio, here on behalf of Puttingstone. I understand that we're having a little capacity problem here this evening.
Talk a little louder.
I understand we're having a capacity problem here this evening for my application for removing retaining walls. But I'd like to have this adjourned, I guess, for a bigger room.
Well, I would like to have a special meeting. If we didn't, how many people are here for? It's all about the journey. Can you raise your hand? So you've got about 10, 15, I mean, if we didn't have them here, then we could potentially, if you want a bigger room, you want a special meeting, we're going to have to negotiate.
Well, I just want to point, there's, there's folks on the hallway and there may be folks who aren't here tonight.
I, yeah, I understand that, Davey. Yes, I'm sure of that.
Well. Negotiate what? You need a bigger room or you need to?
Well, I, I have to get a bigger room. And I don't, you know, since COVID, I don't know if, if schools are letting us in it anymore. I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, they suggest the rec room at the PAL is pretty large.
Rec room at the PAL is a possibility, but it's going to require a significant transfer of sound equipment, right?
I don't know what they do.
They have it? I can't imagine the schools are letting people in.
So, so we don't, we don't know where we're going to have it. We don't know when we're going to have it. And. And what? That's a problem. Thank you.
Could I, just one thing, though, for, for this application, for the Puttingstone people, obviously, you, you don't know how many are going to show up. But our issue is here, we can't run a meeting over capacity here. Okay? It's not safe. It's a violation of fire.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So if you're here for Puttingstone.
Thank, thank you, sir. Thank you. I apologize.
Wait, wait, before they clear out really quickly, though, if we can carry this to the next meeting to see if I have a place and then announce where and when.
We're going to carry this meeting to May 3rd without further notice, but the meeting will not be heard May 3rd. On May 3rd, we will come up with a plan as to where we're going to have it and on what day we're going to have it. Is that, is that, am I in agree, is that the, that's the deal, right? Everybody's on board on that? Mr. O'Neil, you're on board?
Yes, thank you very much. I have one question through the end next month.
Okay.
One question, though. If in fact we have less than 130 people, we can have the meeting in this room, right?
How are you going to guarantee that?
I know you're not going to guarantee.
All right. Is there a motion to May 3rd? Motion to May 3rd? Second, any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? You have to, you have to.
Come on May 3rd and find out.
Call, on May 4th, on May 4th, you can call Nora and she'll tell you where it's going to be.
Chairman, should we do a five minute?
Yeah, I might as well take a five minute. What was that? Look at that, 120 phone calls. Nora, just put it on your answering machine.
This is the wackiest night ever.
Maybe we got many people looking.
Thank you. Thank you for winning.
Okay, folks, if you'd like to exit, please, we didn't move on. Appreciate your time.
Three, um, three hits, runner and runner. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, guys.
Only got three hits.
Good night. Can we back to the journey?
Pope's got a hit, judge has a hit, and, I'm sorry. Pope's got a hit, judge has a hit, Cabrera had.
Back to the journey.
And where do I get out of here?
Thank you, thank you for coming out. I really appreciate it.
We're legal now. You want to stay, stay back there?
All right, let's, can we go back on the record, Nora?
Please.
Okay, we're back on the record.
All right, Chairman, thanks. We took that little break to allow the agenda to be dealt with. So I, I have no further questions for Ms. Walco, so.
Members of the public, any members, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to explain this out. I'm going to be very succinct. If you have a question, number one, you walk up to the microphone. Number two, you state your name. Number three, you state your address. Number four, you speak loudly enough into the microphone so we can hear you. It's questions. It's not time for testimony. Okay? Questions. So I'm going to ask now, is there any member of the public that has questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Please come forward. So is there, do we have any extra chairs or not? No?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Denise Michael. I live at 30 Field Press Road. I don't have a question, but I do want.
Then you, then no, then sit down. Then, so sit down. What, what makes you think I said, you have a question?
So if you can allow me to make my point, I, I want to.
I don't want you to make your point. I want you to ask her a question.
Okay, so my question is, you stated there is no other facility in the vicinity like what you're running.
No, not like what we're running, like what we're proposing, to be put into a, a house other than the ones that I mentioned. I don't know of any others that are in a home, but not in a, like, commercial-type facility.
Oh, I didn't hear that. So that, that's what I wanted to clarify. Because I do know of one in Forum Park, so.
Yeah, and like I said, there was, there's one in Denville that I know. There's one in Morris, uh, Morris Plains that I'm aware of. You know, there are other things that do things similar to us. They usually operate under DDD. They don't normally operate under their, the insurance aspect of it, which is a lot more, we have to meet medical necessity. When we're, when I say that we're doing by insurance, we have to meet those guidelines that the insurance company sets out. So that's what makes that a little different.
I, I can't challenge that. I don't know about that.
So again, to the chairman's point, this, every witness is going to testify. You get to ask them questions. After they're done, you get to come back and then you get to testify yourselves under oath. So that's why you have to ask questions now. That's the question.
Sorry if I wasn't, didn't explain that last part. I thought it was.
So you're saying the only thing that makes you different is that you are in a home compared to somebody who might be going, bringing a client into a strip mall or an office building, correct?
That, along with the insurance and along, you know, the medical necessity component, and the fact that we're trying to tie all of this together for them, yes. But there are other people out there that will do community-based support, or they might do life skills, they might do vocational.
Could they do exactly the same thing you do, but in an office building?
Could, could you do that? Yes, you could. I'm not going to say you can't. It's, it's the, you know, it's the atmosphere that we're looking for.
Got you.
What, what type of client is not taken by you?
I.
I mean, someone who has got violent tendencies would.
At this time, we do not take the lower end of the spectrum who have that extreme violent tendency. We don't, we don't have the facility. Even this facility would not have this proper equipment to handle that. So we are, we are focusing on our middle to higher edge. So a middle end might not be able to communicate. They might need the, the, the auditate, the augmentative devising. They might need sign language. They might think. sign language. They might think things like that. We primarily deal with autistic people.
Okay.
If somebody came with downs, I'm not going to say no.
The age, the age bracket seemed to move around. They're not all over twenty-one. You take some from the high school.
No. What I'm saying is, we are hoping to have the high school students come and, and work, be peer models with our adults for maybe an hour after school. What we take in this facility would be basically eighteen and up, if you wanna get there, because they have to go through school. Pat, sometimes, parents choose to pull their, their adult students out, but all programs in the schools typically go to twenty-one. Right now, our students are twenty-one to thirty.
My understanding is all school districts in the state now have to provide facilities for people on the spectrum.
They have to offer it, yes.
They have to offer it up to age twenty-one.
Correct.
The families can opt to take that at the public school or go to the private sector once they're eighteen, okay?
Correct.
They can't go there before eighteen, okay? They have to be in the public school system. That's, then from that eighteen to twenty-one is a big hole. After twenty-one, they're not serviced within the public school system of any kind, any educational system. That's the need your, your business is fulfilling. Did I have that correct?
Yes.
And mentioning Parcypony High School, you want Parcypony High School students to come volunteer? Is that?
Volunteer or possibly, you know, be paid position. You know, we don't have a, you know, especially seniors who are looking to go off into the education field, into special education, into, uh, psychology, sociology, things like that. We would love to have, to help them along and have them come in and, you know, work with our, with our adults.
So, so just, just so you know, and every case is, uh, heard and decided on their own merits. We recently did not approve of case of something that was kinda similar, uh, senior housing of sorts, you know, of elder care and whatnot, and it was a very admirable, uh, goal, and they, they kinda came up with the same kinda concept. They didn't want it in a, uh, office park and office space. They wanted it in a community. But you have to realize that you are asking us to approve, no matter how noble it might be, us to approve of putting a business in a community. And when you have objectors about that, that's, that does weigh, especially when there is other areas where it could be done. So, especially when we have somebody on the board who is voicing a concern and who has invested, not invested interest, but is, has, knows what the deal is with this community, it makes me at least very, very wary to, although again, how noble it is, to put this business in a, in a residential community. That's why I think you'll benefit from hearing the testimony, hopefully soon, of, of John McDonough, who can lay all that out.
Okay.
So I have one more question to follow. Okay, we, we know that we had, we have twenty, um, clients. We have, we have one-to-ones, so we have another twenty, um, doctors.
Up to, up to, up to.
Up to, yeah, twenty, twenty. How many of these, uh, high school kids are you also gonna have that's gonna supplement the forty that you could potentially have in this building?
Uh, well, I think that would really depend upon, um, first of all, an interest. And I would focus.
So you, so the, the purpose of that is you have to, you have to give the, the board and all the information so they can make decisions.
I, I understand. And most, what I'm looking at when, when we talk about the, um, you know, possibility of the high school students, that would be more available for what we're looking for fall, when we're looking for the summer. We're not looking for that to be a whole year job. Okay, so, but, so that primarily where they would really come in to help is, is in the social areas, that when we're outside, when we're trying to do cornhole, we're trying to do volleyball. Those are the kind of activities we would be looking for them to help out with. And they would sign up for a period and.
Have you had any communication with the high school?
Have not. Not at this, at this time.
So this is just kind of a thought you had?
This is something that we would love to have do, yes.
I wa, I wanna raise my question again about the, the absence of a certification that this building can accommodate what you're proposing, meaning the number of people. And it, I mean, I understand it's soft. I mean, you, if, if somebody says, I got another client and it's a perfect client, and you got twenty already.
At that point, they'll be on our waiting list or they could go back, we could actually open back up again in Dover.
Yeah, whatever you do. But I, I mean, this, this building has been in front of this board a couple times, so we're pretty familiar with it. And we really need to know that you can get in there, you know? If it's eighteen, what the architect says, then it's eighteen.
It's eighteen, yeah.
Yeah, so we don't know that.
My understanding of the testimony is she would look up to those people. Right now, as, trying to say, you're gonna comply with whatever.
Whatever they allow us.
Okay, and that may be ten people. It may be five people.
And could I suggest that?
We're not here to approve twenty people.
I get it. But I do suggest, I do suggest that if the board would favor playing on this application, as a condition, having a, a certified architect go out and determine what the occupancy limit is for this, for that building, and then that's what we have to deliver.
And, and, you know, I know that you're aware of it, that three houses or so down the road is, is a physical threat, people located in what used to be a house. And, you know, we have Century Twenty-One a couple of doors down, and the church across the street. And, and all of Two-O-Two has always been, from the start, mixed, you know, some residential, some commercial. And I understand that that has caused problems in the past, and I understand that each one, um, even this own house had approval with, um, of other businesses and things. Um, and I understand that each one you have to decide upon based on the merits that are present.
A question I have, a number of people keeps coming up, and one of the things historically this board doesn't like is, we'll do this later. We'll get you this information later. We know this is being carried between now and the next case. Can you have that architect go in and get us the numbers we're looking for?
Before I spend my client's money, Mary Jo, before, when this application is carried to the, a subsequent meeting, can you retain an architect to go determine, under New Jersey Code, what the occupancy limit is for your?
I have no problem going to do that.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example. I have a, a rental house down the shore. And in order to have, get a certification for the number of sleeping, it's seventy square feet for the first person in a bedroom and fifty square feet for each additional person. Very simple. Okay, there are other requirements. And with John, John is sitting here saying, you know, this is, we, we don't know. We don't know what, we don't know what's going on.
There's two parts to it. There's gonna be an occupancy load and there's gonna be a fire, safety standard, fire safety standard.
And I think the architect can determine those both.
I should be able to, yes.
We will get that information.
Because you're dealing with an upstairs-downstairs thing. I don't remember any exterior exits to that building.
There is.
There is?
Yes.
There at the back?
At the, at the top in the back, there's a kitchen with a sliding door that goes down Jersey winding stairs.
Okay.
I think it's somebody else who.
Oh, are they inside?
Outside.
Have a question. Any, are we done with the questioning?
No.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Robert, come on up.
Sir, for the record, state your name.
Robert Sarrow, thirty-one Field Crest Road, Parcypony, New Jersey.
Robert Sarrow, thirty-one Field Crest Road, Parcypony, New Jersey. And I guess the question I have, the first time we were here, you had mentioned that your staff was gonna be parking in St. Christopher's and Crossing Two-O-Two. Has that plan changed?
Yes, it has.
Can I ask why?
Uh, the, uh, Archdiocese has changed their, um, programs that if you're not on, if you don't have a program, uh, as part of the church, they won't allow, uh, renting of the parking any longer. So we took care of that.
Obviously, you've been very successful, and I'd like to congratulate you on that. Sounds like you did a wonderful job in expanding this business. Uh, I did hear the board ask some questions about the twenty more, but some of your answers that I heard were, well, maybe we're doing one-on-one, or maybe we might do, and I don't, didn't hear the term, that we might be one to more. So am, am I understanding properly that you're not gonna have any more than twenty people at one time?
Well, it's, we have, we were anticipating twenty clients at one time.
Okay.
So then they each have a one-to-one, and then we have a behaviorist, um, or myself that might be there, kind of thing.
So that's twenty-one. You have an administrator or receptionist?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
No receptionist, nobody?
That's, that's a job for one of the.
You have a driver go for the bus, right?
Correct.
So he's gonna be there?
Well, he'll be in the van, yeah.
Where will you be?
I typically am in my office that is in, um, Kenville. If my VCBA has, is out sick, obviously I will go there and be the supervisor for that day. We're not leaving anybody alone.
Well, VCBA is the supervisor.
Correct.
So is that a one-year business plan for twenty people? Is there a five-year business plan you have that, what you wanna grow this? Cause obviously you're growing this business pretty rapidly and pretty well, pretty large.
Thank you. And we do it very methodically and slowly. As far as that goes, we, we start with how many, I mean, that we have, and we go from there. But we're gonna be limited by the request that they've just asked us from the architect of how many we're gonna be in there for fire safety and for occupancy load.
Yeah, another thing you mentioned that you're only gonna be there five days a week, but then again, you also said that you might have picnics and parties on weekends, so.
Well, what we said was we would, we would, our typical day is Monday to Friday, which is from eight-thirty to four-thirty. On occasions, especially I would say in the summer, is that we will have an occasional, and when I say occasional, maybe one a month for the summer, where we might have a Friday night activity, we might have a Saturday, um, you know, morning activity, maybe we'll do gardening. Um, that's the kinda thing. Again, we're bringing in the, the kids that are already there, just like a, a, you know, a neighbor would have a, a family party or picnic, sure.
So how many people will be at this picnic?
The same amount that we have now.
Well, you got the parents?
No, no, they won't come. This is for the adults.
This is for the children?
The adults, yeah.
And the one-on-one ratio?
Correct.
Quick clarification question for you. You just testified eight-thirty to four-thirty. Your planning report says eight to five, which is correct.
Well, it's tech, it's eight to four-thirty, but we wanted to leave a little time in in case it took extra cleaning or we had paperwork, but the, the, I will tell you that this, the students are gonna be between nine and four.
And the staff?
The staff, we give a half hour to prepare and then, you know, a half hour or so to clean up.
So.
If there's a, somebody doing.
Not eight o'clock as your planning report says?
No, we, that was just in case we needed a buffer either direction. Um, to, to do paperwork, I didn't wanna say that nobody was gonna be in the building.
So the residents should expect traffic on that lot between eight and five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say, but extent, not the, the whole group.
Understood.
Okay.
But if I'm a neighbor, I just, I'm trying to understand.
Sure, you want, if you see a car there at eight o'clock, I know, you wanna make sure that they belong. Correct. And that's why we put that originally. This, I can't tell you, my VCBA won't come in early to do paperwork ahead of time, so I didn't wanna not build that in.
That's right. Right. And Mary Jo, assume this facility's approved, you buy it, you operate, and you're so wildly successful, you have more clients, you don't do it. What is your plan in that contingency?
Well, we have a waiting list that we already utilized, and then from there, we're gonna be looking for other homes that are like this, that we can do the same thing, because obviously the model happens.
But you will put in, if the fire, if the architect comes back and says, hey, if you do fifty, you'll go up to whatever the architect says?
I won't go up to fifty.
Why not?
Because I can tell you, I wouldn't put my, my own child in there with that. It's too many people.
But forty, but forty's okay?
Yeah. Because like I said, we looked at what we felt comfortable with based on our experience, um, which we, you know, have of how many work in a room and space. So we ballparked.
Okay, let's move ahead. Any other members of the public? Come on up. Whoever's next, come on up.
Sir, if you can state your name and spell, please?
Nicholas Homayak Lake Hiawatha, H-O-M-Y-A-K. Uh, you said these, uh, adults, right?
Correct.
Would be picked up in Dover. So how long would the trip from Dover to Parcypony, uh, do you think, uh, will take? And what time do they have to be in Dover to be at your?
So that I'm clear, that's, that's my staff that would be picked up? That's not the clients. The clients get dropped off by their parents. It's my staff that would have to be there and picked up by the van and brought into work.
And then they get, uh?
Pick, take, at the end of the day, put in the van, taken back.
But what does it matter what?
Yes.
I think it's confused that it was clients.
Yeah, but what is it relevant when it comes to here?
I was just wondering how much time they might have to spend on, on the road between point A and point B before the activities start?
He was, he was thinking it was the clients that were being picked up in Dover and dropped off.
You think it's a ridiculous question, then?
Mr. Homayak, can, can find your questions to zoning.
Right.
Okay?
Actually, her, her testimony, the questions.
Yeah, I, uh.
But he was in eighty-second airborne, so he jumped out of plane.
Did he really?
Yep. I didn't know that.
Uh, that's, the only curiosity I had, and I wasn't quite sure who was being picked up, so you clarified that for me. So I'm satisfied. Okay.
Thank you.
What is your policy with clients driving to the site?
My clients are, are not eligible to drive.
Out of the high class?
I would, I would say no, because the only one that I have that, that even has a license is a staff member who's autistic.
Any other questions from the public? Please come on forward.
Ma'am, if you could just state and spell your name.
Yes, Pam McDonald, M-A-C-D-O-N-A-L-D, and I'm on Field Crest Road renting store to this property. I have in my possession here the history of the sale of this house, and I have a very important question.
And again, it's questions, yes.
Yes, oh, yes, there are questions. When we spoke at the last meeting, you said you were under contract for this house since April of twenty-twenty-two.
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
The Realtor's here, if you want.
Well, this, the report says June first, twenty-twenty-two. You had a closing date listed on this report of October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Can I ask a quick question? What reports? What report? Where does this start? I don't know what this is.
Excuse me, excuse me. You can present this information when we ask if there's any members of the public who wish to testify. This is not time to testify.
I'm not testifying. I'm going, I'm going to ask this woman why it's taken her a year to get before the board.
That's a good question. Is that, is that, uh?
Because we run very slow.
When did we file this application?
Well, I don't know. It's, well, you're under contract.
I get it.
Since June first, according to this report.
Excuse me, excuse me. We have no proof of that.
I do.
Well, you can't present it for crying out loud! Is, I'm, I'm gonna be blunt. Is English your first language?
Yes.
God bless you!
God bless me is right. My second language is Spanish.
You cannot present evidence at this point in the meeting!
Okay, but my question is to this woman, why is she here now? It's almost a year later.
Because do you know how long it takes to get before this board? Do you have any idea?
Yes, I do.
Okay, how long does it take? How long does it take?
I was one of the, the people who gave a lot of input to the master plan. I've been here for fifty years. I know how long it takes.
God bless you. How long have you, how long have you been on the zoning board?
Not many, but I.
Have you been on this board?
No.
Okay.
But I'm certainly qualified to do.
I could represent.
You're most qualified, but your question you're asking.
If this could help. I, I'm one of the attorneys that's, I'm, I'm doing the land use side of it. There was, my partner's doing the, uh, more real estate side of it, but we are under contract. Uh, the seller really wants to know, I probably have to send an email tonight saying what happened tonight, but we've been under contract. We've been waiting patiently for the opportunity to present our case. We are doing it as diligent, as fast as we can, but.
When, when was this application filed?
November twenty-two.
Late last year.
In October.
October. This application was filed in October. It is now April, six months later. That, that, that's not reasonable to you? That they're here today?
That's not. Well, we have the closing date listed on this report.
Well, but the report, what does it matter?
How long it takes to get before this board?
That's okay, don't, okay.
There's nothing we do with what we're here for.
Do you have any more questions? Any more questions to her?
Any more questions to her?
But I think my question is.
It was a good question. Do you have any more questions? Your question is, your question is terrible! It's a terrible question, because there's nothing to do with zoning!
If I can, we were scheduled, I believe, in March, but then there was not enough time on the agenda, we got carried to April, but in April, there wasn't a full five, I don't think there was five members available, and we need five, yes.
That's right.
So then we got carried to tonight, and the board was kind enough to put us on, that's the first commercial application this evening. And you're, you're a contract purchaser, so you're not going to purchase, your client is not going to purchase property unless she gets approval. Correct. So they have to get the approvals, once they get the approvals, that's where they're going to close. And the seller has been patient, as sellers are seldom.
Looks like you're more anxious.
One year under contract has nothing to do with the zoning! We've had applications, we've had applications five years it takes to get through this board, and then another five years before they start building!
Looks like you are more anxious.
Sir, if you could just, what's your address? I'm sorry. Fifty, thank you.
When you said the clients will be part of the community, what is the radius of the reach? Like, are they wandering around the neighborhood? Are they, what's that radius?
They could, they could take a walk around the neighborhood, sure, but we're really looking at getting out in, into the, the community of Parsippany, going to the mall, going to the stores, working in shops, working.
So aren't we supervised?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
The second question is, when you say this business is unlicensed by the state, who does it audit? Like, you say, okay, 40 person in, in that building, who audits that?
Well, I can tell you, in our current ones, the fire marshals are in, and, you know, they come through and they see if we don't, if we're in ratio or we're not in ratio.
But not every day.
No, not every day.
Does the municipal board of health get in at all?
The municipal board of health is in there.
That's a good question.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board? Come on, I'm sure, Pete, you're, you've been waiting patiently. Come on up.
Ma'am, Nick?
Jack Puka, and I'm at 21 Hill Crest Road.
And Puka, how is all that, please?
Like Frank, U C A.
Okay.
So, are you operating currently at that site?
At which site?
The one in question.
No.
You know.
Nope, not at all.
There's tenants, the current, the seller has tenants in the property.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though we're the contract purchaser, the seller is still renting it out, two tenants.
Who's next? Come on up. Come on, question, come on up.
Before you speak, would you mind making sure the microphone's on it, there'll be a green light on it.
Working? Alvin Casper, 41 Field Crest Road.
Okay, um, first name?
Alvin, A-L-B-I-N-Casper. I'd like to ask if you have done an extensive research, or extensive search for properties that would not need to, you would not need to seek approvals for any further?
We were looking for two years. We had one, we were under contract with Indenville, that fell apart, and now we continue to look, and now we found this one. Like I said, we're very specific of what we're looking for, we're looking for a house, we are not looking to, to be in an office complex or storefront.
Second question. If you, if you buy this house and you get the approvals and you hit your limit, would you seek to possibly get approvals for the house next door to that one, too? Or the house next to that one?
I, I mean, if we're, we're looking at this, and we would look at anything that was on the market. I can't, I can't, you know, expand it out, I mean.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board? Not board, by the members of the public? Nobody else? We're done? Just witness, thank you.
Thank you.
You got another witness? Maybe we can do one more tonight before we turn to pumpkins?
I'd like to call Donna Bullock. Donna is our site engineer, I'd like to have her sworn in. Raise your right hand, ma'am, you swear from testimony about the board's, or somebody got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Donna M. Bullock, B-U-L-L-O-C-K.
And your testimony will be?
As a professional engineer, I have my professional license, it's active, I've been in the, being, giving testimony for 25 years now.
Have you been, so you've been either sworn before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, and all those licenses are in still, are in full force of effect?
Yes, they are.
Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn and qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Donna, you were involved with the great amount of site engineering proposed for this site. Can you maybe by going to the board, first explain what the original plan was, what the county said about that original plan, and how you plan to comply with both Mr. Holloway's comments as well as the county's requirements? Don't forget the mic. It has to be green.
Thank you.
Green.
Green. Okay, well, we have a.
Describe what's up on the easel.
This is our plan sheet number two of four of the site plan set that I will be referring to, and on the left side is a site layout plan, and on the right side is a grading plan. It is a 0.57 acre site, it's within the R3 zone, it's on the south side of Littleton Road. The property currently consists of two and a half story building and a shed, and a paved parking area, and a driveway. What the applicant is proposing is to increase the driveway width to 24 feet, pave, compile a parking area that will have eight parking spaces, including one handicapped. We show, well, I'll get to that in a second, and a, and a fence, and that's what they're proposing. During a review by the county planning board, they had asked us to remove this 14-foot wide, 12-foot wide circular drive, so we have agreed to do that with the board, with the county planning board. So basically, what that means is we're seeking a waiver for percent lot coverage, so without this portion of the driveway, percent lot coverage will go down to 34.3% instead of the 38.6% as initially submitted.
On that plan, how much additional new paving is proposed by this applicant?
I'm going to highlight in yellow the area that's existing pavement, and I hope it can be seen. Does everyone see that?
So how many additional spaces are being proposed by this applicant as far as per site plan? And explain why there's a little further bump into the back there with that pavement?
Well, it looks like if you striped it out, you would, we're adding three more spaces to what's currently there based on width, and the bump out in the back would be utilized for the people who are backing out, so that they don't run into any grass or anything as they exit the driveway. We're also proposing a patio area behind the dwelling, so that there's area for people to sit and stay and, you know, do whatever they want to do outside.
So pavement, patio, fence.
Yes.
And is there any other related improvement?
There might be other minor improvements, but as far as the plan shows, that's it.
Now, you received Mr. Holloway's review report?
Yes, I did, dated November 29th, 2022.
In order to kind of help explain, is there anything that Mr. Holloway either suggested or required that you take exception to and are, have any problem with?
We have no exception to the items, except I would like to just say, number one, that the percent lot coverage has, number one, they wanted to know what the building lot coverage was, and that's 7%, and we'll include that into our table. And as far as drainage, we'd like to work with the engineer and maybe do some type of rain garden or something here, that would be, you know, better looking for, for the environment. And item number 12, we do indicate to the north side of the property that there's a 15-foot right away per F M, per filed map. That right away is a utility right away. We will add that note to it, so we know it's not a right away for, for cars or, or anything like that. And we, we're going to reutilize the existing utilities, and there will be a sign proposed that will conform with the ordinance.
Now, assuming that this board approves its application and Mary Jo purchases the property and proceeds, as part of resolution, applies would you be to make all those changes to the site plan to conform with Mr. Holloway's comments?
Yes, we will.
I have no further questions.
I've got one on this particular map. So on the side there, it looks like there's a proposed wall mount light. Do we know what time that will be lit up, and obviously, what's, what the, the amount of light it's going to be given off? I know the neighbors around the neighborhood probably, it's a bright one. Are the other one, and is, there's, there's, it looks like there's two in the front as well, but there's nothing saying they're proposed.
Okay, we have presented a lighting plan on sheet three of four, and it does show that those three wall-mounted lights that you just pointed out to, one, two, three, are wall-mounted at 10 feet high, and we do have a .5-point lighting isolux for you. And there's also, no, that's it, that's, that's the three signs.
To answer, okay, there's a specific question. Would those be on a timer to go off at night so they're not, all night long, and there will be signs?
I would have to ask that of the, of property owners.
But they could be put on a timer so that, because the facility is not being used late at night, they would go off.
Yes, they can.
And would you, on behalf of the outfit, have any issues with that?
No issues.
Okay, and those are three lights, not three signs?
Sorry, three lights.
Scary different.
I'm sorry, did I say signs?
Speaking of signs, are you going to speak to signs, or someone else going to speak to signs?
I don't, I'm fairly certain a sign is contemplated, and it'll, it'll have to be conformed, because, so we don't.
The only thing you can have in that residential zone is a nameplate sign.
Yeah, so, it'll have to be conformed, so, otherwise, there'll be no sign. Again.
Well, the clientele is going to change over time. They're not going to be there for their, going to a job in the same building for so many years, they're going to be changing. They're going to need a sign that they don't go with and buy it.
Right, now, I know the.
I think you ought to think about it.
Yeah, I think the thought was to have one of those nice wood carved or composite.
Whatever it is, you need to have it so they, they could look at it.
Okay.
Because if it's, the nameplate sign allowed in the zone, it's worthless.
Okay, so in anticipation of when we resume, we'll have a decent.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for a report dated October 28th. One of them you've addressed already, you got rid of that loop driveway, and that was kind of what the comment was all about. The other one is the amount of parking spaces. The testimony we had is we have two vans, correct?
Total for the business.
Right, and they may both be there part of the day.
Correct.
We have no traffic from employees. The turnover for the clientele of a maximum would be expected to be, how many spaces do you need? I mean, I'll go to the daycare center, at the daycare center, basically, you try to look for one to seven, one to eight kids.
I see where you're going, John. Mary Jo, any issues with losing those three?
I mean, you decided to expand a parking lot for some.
No, we would, keep it in mind that we were talking about the number of, of parents that would be coming in and dropping off, even staggered, we don't have to have it, it was just trying to make it a little bit. My concern is, as one's pulling in, one's pulling out, because it's a single driveway, I wanted to make sure that there was a, okay, they're going to have a spot, pull in, and then I'll pull out, but I don't have any problem.
Well, how many spaces do you have there now?
I think it's eight, I think it's five, and I think that just expanded it to eight, so it allowed that, that parents going in and out.
I got you. You don't need to have parents to drop off. Maybe, maybe you should relook at that a little bit.
I'm more than happy to.
Let me save you a little mind. The patio, is that patio concrete, pavers, dirt?
Pavers.
Pavers, rain go sir?
On sand, right? Is it on sand?
Yes, pavers on sand.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
I have a question regarding the.
Yes, sir.
Adjustment of the parking area, do you still need three external lights, or would one of the lights be okay to be removed or reduced?
Yeah, based on our, our lighting layout, it does, yes, it appears that we can eliminate a light, and there'd be enough foot candles to reach the five existing stalls. You're welcome.
And we'll be fine with that.
Is that parking lot in good shape? I can't remember.
Yes.
Yes, she's saying yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's expanded for a space or so, it's, okay.
No question. Any other questions from the board? Okay, members of the public, any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Please come forwards.
Hand them the mic. Again, just for the record.
Robert DeSaro, 31 Field Crest Road, Parsippany, New Jersey. When I viewed the plan at the board office, I saw a horseshoe driveway that was going to be added to the property. Has that been removed, or is that just there?
Yes, that has been removed.
That has been removed. I also heard that there was going to be a fence erected, I didn't hear you say anything about a fence.
I did mention the fence.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you point out where the fence is going?
Yes.
Do you need a variance for the fence, or is it conforming?
It's, he shows the six-foot-high fence in the front yard area, it'll have to be cut back.
It lines up with the house.
So with the back of the house, it goes across? Is that what I'm looking, I'm partially blind, I'm sorry.
So the fence runs from the south side corner of the house to the rear, then along the rear property line, and then all the way down to the right away of Littleton Road.
And that piece that's coming down, down to Littleton Road will either have to be eliminated or changed to a picket four feet high or less.
50% open.
Yes, we'll, we'll transition it to 50% open or foot high at the building setback line.
Which is permitted.
I didn't hear anything about any shrubbery or greenery, or screening shrubs going along the fence, or along the back of the property, or along the side of the property?
Got to ask why? You have any consideration for the neighbors?
Well, we can.
Was it about making the money?
Yes, I, I, we are, we will prepare a landscaping plan for review for the board.
How high are you going to put it planted? How high of a tree, and what type of shrubs would you put in?
I'll present that on the plan, I'm not a landscape architect, so I really wouldn't know, I'd have to give it to a landscape architect in our office to prepare.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other members in public?
Sir, just for the record, state your name, please.
Nicholas Homyak. Can you tell me if there is any, do any trees exist on the property, any rhododendrons or anything?
There are several large trees on the site.
And?
One, one would have had to have been removed if we expanded the parking in the easternly direction, but now that we've determined that we only need five spaces, that one tree in that location that would have had to be removed can, can stay now.
So how many trees are there?
There's, there were two trees that we anticipated removing.
Wouldn't the trees be considered as a pleasant aspect for your clientele?
What we were looking at as engineers was looking at the three trees that are currently in the way of the expansion of the proposed parking area. There's one that is closer to the road, that would be in the way of constructing the handicap spot, and then there were two others, two other trees to the east of the existing edge of pavement that we would have had to have had removed, but because we're stopping the edge of pavement and not extending to add those additional parking spaces, two of those large trees do not have to be removed.
All right, and what else was I going to say here? Oh, yeah, is there, will your pavement be porous, or it be a regular asphalt?
It will be a porous pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a letter of objection.
I have a letter of objection.
You're watching the mic.
Members, of course, pavers.
Come on up, name first, address second.
I'd like to make a correction. She used the wrong word. When she meant porous pavement, she meant the pavers in the patio, but not the asphalt in the driveway will not be porous. Yeah, we're not putting that in.
I was impressed.
That's too pricey. They're going to put my foot down there.
It's going to be poured concrete, asphalt.
Asphalt.
I have a letter, excuse me, I have a letter from Mr. Pianotti who lives at 89.
I don't want to hear about it.
You don't want to hear about it?
I do not want to hear about it.
When can I submit this letter then?
You can't.
You can't.
We can't take a letter from somebody we don't even know who he is. How am I going to ask that letter a question?
There you go.
You have 50 years of experience with this.
I've written quite a few letters, you know, saying I'm in, I'm in favor of your, especially for Don Mikulski.
For, for here, for this board? And guess what? We've ignored everyone.
They've all been thrown away. Waste of the ink.
You're good tonight. You're good.
We can't, we cannot, we cannot accept documentation like that. If you want to ask a question, you have to be here to ask the question. If you want to testify, you have to be here under oath so that we can cross-examine you if necessary. Bring him in.
I'll give you a hand.
There you go.
Any other questions by the board, by the members of the public? I don't even know what I'm talking about anymore. Come on up.
Come on.
Come on up, Mr. DeSaro.
In reference to the trees, do I have to say my name again?
I said, come on up, Mr. DeSaro.
There you go, that covers me, huh?
How long have we known each other? A long time, right?
Too, too long.
You're a nutty boy, right?
That's right. You're a bubble boy, right?
That's right.
And that's why we used to kick your butt in football.
That's right, every year.
Basically, there's a walnut tree, a very large walnut tree in the backyard and.
Black walnut?
Yes. And that's been assessed to be rotted out in the center core. Is there any intentions of taking that down because it is leaning? And from the previous owner, when he sold that property, he never took care of it. And I know of a tree guy that went there because I referred him, that said that that tree could come down with a major storm.
The lady in the back is shaking her head yes.
Yes, it's right in the area that we want the patio, yes.
We'll take it down.
Take it down. No problem.
Consider it gone.
Any other members of the public? That's it, from, that's it, okay. We have 25 minutes if you want to start, Mr. McDonough. Mr. McDonough, Mr. McDonough is always, his testimony is always very entertaining, so.
Sir, you raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give to the board yourself, you got to see.
Yes, I do.
But for the record, can you state, spell your name?
Sure. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough, it's spelled M-C capital B-O-N-O-U-G-H.
And your testimony will be?
I am a licensed professional planner, I'm a project planner.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are, both on the state and national level.
And you've provided testimony before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. You're sworn, Mr. Chairman's witness has been sworn and qualified.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Now, you've heard all the testimony this evening from Mary Jo and from Donna, you've heard the public comments. What I'd like you to do is, I mean, other than just going through your planning testimony, I'd like to talk about the use, what the use means with respect to the devariance and those standards and, and even if it's, that you find it's inherently beneficial. And if not, what are those standards that apply and how do you believe that this application has met the standards for a devariance?
Sure. And we issued a planning report dated January 7, 2023, that Billy will form the outline of what I'm going to give the board here. And I think the board well knows the criteria for inherently beneficial use. Those are category of uses that are presumptively so good, so advancing of the public good that they automatically satisfy the positive criteria. This may well be considered that, but I'm actually going to walk the board through the more stringent test as though it was not inherently beneficial, because I think the more stringent test of site suitability is met here, whether or not the board finds that inherently beneficial is met.
And just the reasoning that it's inherently beneficial?
Again, it is an intermediate care facility as defined under 66.2 under the statute.
Is it a complement to the use that was in the famous SEKA case where that involved a doctor who provided kind of similar services?
There's a whole category.
He was a brain doctor.
But he was a for-profit brain doctor.
What does that have to do with the autistic?
Neuro, no, in terms of neurological care. I think that was, the issue with SEKA is was.
I withdraw the question.
Yeah, but can a for-profit business be ever inherently beneficial? In that case, yes, it can be. It meets the standard.
Okay. There are a whole category of uses in the MLUL under 66.2 that pertain to community residences. One of them was Dr. Seika's facility, which was a head trauma facility where that application was actually denied. And that's where the SEKA test was applied, went to the courts and reversed on grounds of, a different test, a simplified test. I'm not going to go through the simplified test, I'm actually going to go through the more stringent Medici test, but the question was asked, so we put that out.
You want to test it?
Sure. So to augment what I put forth in my planning report.
A1?
A1 for the record. We're going to put together a series of photographs to show the characteristic of Littleton Road. And we've got some supplemental photographs in the report as well. I'll wait for that to catch up as it goes through. But just to establish my familiarity with this particular road, this particular section of Parsippany, I went through the 1st junior high, I went through the three years there, and then four years over at Park Hills, which are right around the corner. So I drove Littleton Road every day, I still do, because my office is right down the road.
Who gets to play with the drone?
That is the licensed drone operator in the, in the office, it's not me. It's not. So this is what the property looked like at the end of December, right before Christmas. It's a fair and accurate representation of the property. It is a beautiful home, a beautiful old colonial home here that dates back to sort of 1820. We know that this is occupied as a mixed-use building. It's about a half acre piece of land. And one of the findings that created this as a mixed-use building by variance, which had commercial on the bottom levels and residential on the top level in a residential zone, was the fact that the use was preserving the building that's there and the historic nature of it, the fabric of it, and again, the aesthetic appeal of it. This applicant is doing the exact same thing here. This is not a knockdown to replace with some type of institutional-looking building. It's just going to look like a residential building in a residential zone. And importantly, as we show the board from both the air and from the ground, again, you do get a sense of the natural aesthetic and openness of this particular piece of property. The last thing I want to point out for the board is the characteristic of Littleton Road. I think we all know, as you can see in your land use map, there are a mix of uses along Littleton Road. It is certainly zoned a residential neighborhood, but we do have a nicely commingled mix of non-residential uses, including commercial uses, including institutional uses, even including a few industrial uses along the way as well. So there is this nice melting pot along this primary corridor in your community. So that's one of the reasons why we think this use is a good match in this location and is not incompatible with the character of the neighborhood. And also by virtue of the condition of the property, which is already half-commercial, the applicant is simply looking to take the rest of the building and use the upper level for commercial or for institutional purposes as well. To walk you through the aspect of the report, again, Littleton Road is a main corridor in the community, it's developed with a nicely commingled mix of uses. You've heard the testimony this evening that this is going to be adaptive reuse for All About the Journey, which provides support for, support services for persons with autism. These services, as you've heard from Mary Jo's testimony, includes behavioral, speech, and occupational therapies. I have in my notes here staffing for about 10 employees, hours of operation weekdays into five with flexibility for some nighttime or weekend activities. In terms of the zone, no doubt about it, we are in a residential zone. This is the R3 zone district, which does permit one-family homes, but also does permit community centers and specialized housing for persons with developmental disabilities. So conceivably, right, a community home for persons with developmentally disabled, developmental disabilities could live here around the clock. Very similar demographic to what the applicant is proposing here, if not the identical demographic falling under that category. So whenever we look at a use variance application, we look at the degree of departure from the zone scheme and whether that degree is substantial. Again, you do have a zone scheme here that does allow for these types of institutional uses with essentially the same demographic that applicant would have here during the day as opposed to around the clock, living in this building. Permitted conditional uses include schools here, I think you may have heard about the Allegro School over at Cedar Knolls, which also provides the exact same services that are being provided here as well. And home occupations, which comes along with it with a whole bunch of non-residential aspects as well. The zone relief, the primary relief is D1 use relief to allow a behavioral therapy facility which is not expressly permitted in the zone. And then interrelated relief for lot coverage, which as I understand it through our testimony has gone down, it's still above that 30%. So we're looking for interrelated relief to modify the parking. In terms of the justification for the relief, again, there's four parts to the Medici test and we're going to walk you through each and every one of those. First part of the test focuses on the land itself, that's why we have land use planning is all land use planning comes back to the land. We've given you the reasons photographically and verbally as well as to how the site is particularly suited for the use by virtue of its context and by virtue of its condition. Contextually, again, it's on a main road that serves a nice mix of uses besides residential. This is not going to make up or break up a pattern along Littleton Road, but we do have these spots of non-residential uses. Condition-wise, again, importantly, the project is going to retain and repurpose a very attractive colonial-style building as opposed to a knockdown and starting over. Second part of the test moves us from the land and moves us over to the land use law and the purposes of zoning and why we zone in the first place. We've given you those reasons as well. The project is going to deliver a beneficial use for all of the reasons that you've heard through the testimony of the operator. Again, the public interest at stake here is public health, to provide support services for persons and families affected by autism, to help individuals lead successful lives, productive lives, and a facility that caters to both children and adults affected by autism in a fun, functional setting. Why in a residential setting? Integration. You don't want to put the individuals that come here in a commercial or institutional setting, again, as a place of comfort, as a place of social gathering. The residential setting is the perfect integration, and that's why this is a, is a good fit here. Next part of the test moves us, let me just stick with that for a second. The project is going to promote efficient land use by retaining the colonial-style building that's there. Efficient use of land is a fundamental goal of planning as well. Another fundamental goal of planning is positive aesthetic. It's a beautiful building, it's going to look and feel the same as we go forward. The project also will promote a fundamental planning goal for a variety of uses, appropriate locations, underscoring the last part of that clause, which is according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens. It is responsible planning to plan for all persons, and again, that's exactly what this applicant is going to deliver here. All of these tie back to purposes of the land use law, especially purpose A, purpose G, purpose I, and purpose M. Third part of the test focuses on the potentially negative impacts, and I think they've been well vetted by this board, is what this board does very well, questions from the public. As we stand here now, all potential impacts have been addressed by the testimony on the record, and I believe that project will flow, function, operate safely, comfortably, efficiently, without creating any substantially adverse impacts, creating unsafe conditions or nuisances. In that regard, I believe the third part of the test is met in that relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public. The fourth part of the test takes everything I just said and asks us to reconcile with the vision, what the zone plan says here. The zone plan does not permit this here. So again, we come back to that degree of departure. As I said, the site has already been approved and operated with a non-residential use on the ground floor. We can certainly find that this relief relates to a distinct site. We're not promoting this use throughout the R3 zone. We don't think it's tantamount to a rezone, but relates to a specific and distinct piece of property. Importantly, we always come back to your master plan, and this project is going to advance multiple purposes, goals, and objectives of your 2020 master plan. And just to put them on the record here, they're in the report, but we will underscore certain pages of the master plan, including goal number five, which states, these are the master plan's words, not mine, "Consider creative alternatives as appropriate, including reusing and repurposing the existing building stock in the overall context of the township's land use planning goals." Goal number nine, ensure that the township has adequate municipal facilities and resources to effectively and efficiently meet the service needs of people living in, working in, and visiting Parsippany. And then goal number 11, encourage new development and redevelopment to take into account the aesthetic character of the community in an effort to enhance the visual and aesthetic appearance of the community. Since the original master plan was adopted in 1975, land planning in Parsippany has recognized higher-order roadways such as Littleton Road as distinctive from local roads in terms of serving residential neighborhoods. So again, in that regard, I believe the board can find that degree of departure here from other committed uses and from what's contemplated in the zone scheme is not substantial, and therefore relief at this location will not be a substantial impairment to the zone plan. Certainly, if the board finds that this use is inherently beneficial as a residence for developmentally disabled or within that category of group home, you could say that the positive criteria are automatically satisfied. If you don't, we've given you the reasons why the positive criteria are satisfied. And then lastly, the relief related to the coverage on the property is a slight uptick over what the ordinance would allow. We think it's been mitigated and addressed by our engineer, that it will not cause any negative or substantial impacts, and is all in the interest of, I'll say, finishing off the parking, bringing it up to contemporary ADA standards. This is a parking lot that's been there for several years, this will modernize it and modify it to meet current, current standards. With that said, I think based on all the testimony, the board can move favorably on this application, hitting all of the criteria, and in that regard, I would say approval is going.
I appreciate your testimony, Mr. McDonough, no, no question.
John, you know I've heard your testimony for 34 years, okay? So this is not new to me. But, and I, and I understand everything you said, and inherently beneficial use is inherently beneficial use and everything about it. But don't you have some concerns about it? That it seems like the interior operations right now are kind of a moving target? And can we make a decision based, based on that? I think we need more information. And I think with the proper information, we can make a reasonable.
No doubt that the board can impose reasonable conditions. If that's a discussion before a vote, that's, that's.
I thought there was agreement that we were going to get an architect to both, both deal with fire safety and pure arc.
Yes, and, and the applicant has agreed that before it asks for a vote, we'd be willing to, to get an architect to provide that type of information to the board in advance of whenever we're carried to. So this board will be provided, and as well as a landscaping plan, as well as a sign detail.
And a revised plan taking the driveway out and whatever.
We can have all of that in advance of the next carry, they'd hope it's not too far in the future.
One question, John, you cited the definition, from what source was that?
66.2.
Yeah, 60, I have the laptop wherever I left it. But it's section 66.2, talks about community residences for the developmentally disabled as being a permitted use.
The what, the zoning code?
The land use, MLUL.
Oh.
Yeah. That says, "Community residences for the developmentally disabled shall, shall be a permitted use in all residential zones." use in all residential zones."
That's not, that's not this.
Yeah. That, it does use the language of intermediate care facilities under that definition. It's a running definition, and I think under Medicare, I mean, this is something we would have...
The testimony was, "We're not intermediate care. We're a private functioning facility dealing with autistic personnel, period."
Yeah, I think the...
Intermediate care is much broader than that.
The testimony was that it was, it's analogous, so it's comparable to what the state encourages. So yes, it is not that, but it is comparable.
So then should it be licensed?
No, not, if it was going for the use that Mr. McDonough described, that would be a license.
She was correct. If she takes state money, then she has to get licensed. And that's why I kept going back and forth, and finally it dawned on me, the facilities I had dealt with all had state funds, got state money.
So you don't, if you don't take state money, that's the...
You don't have to be licensed.
It's not the care you provide?
You don't have to have a state license. If you don't, you have to get a state license if you don't take money from the state function.
You don't have to have a license to run a school, no, if you don't take state money or seek their accreditation.
Again, that's for the facility being licensed versus the individual therapist to order a license.
So when you take state or federal money, accounting, financial statements required, things like that, board, it changes the whole complexion of what you know.
Any questions of Mr., okay, members of the public, any questions of Mr. McDonough on the testimony given this evening? Please come forward. Somebody, anybody? Yeah, you can come first.
For the record, state naming.
Denise Michael, M.I.C.H.A.E.L. So I heard Mr. McDonough say that there'll be services such as speech therapy, physical therapy performed out of this location as well, so that would increase the total on-hand personnel at any given time, correct?
No, I didn't hear that.
I did not say that.
Oh, I thought I heard speech therapy...
Those are the kinds of services they're going to provide, but it doesn't make, in addition to other people coming there.
No.
Those are part of the definition.
No, she's saying it's not.
I'm not providing those in this location.
What he was talking about was...
Not in this location.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
You're a pretty sharp cookie. You did St. Christopher's, didn't you?
I did.
Did I understand correctly that you said that it falls under an inherently beneficial use?
I did not. I walked the board through the more stringent Medici test.
Okay.
I used that word.
You did. Okay, I heard something of that. And in your testimony, you read about our current zoning.
Yes.
And you had mentioned a bunch of things about redevelopment, and if you can help me back to, go back and read them to me again, please.
The goals of the master plan.
That's correct.
What it was.
That's correct.
So I read Goal Number Five was, "Consider creative alternatives as appropriate, including reusing, repurposing existing building stock in the context of the townships."
Can I, can I stop you each one to make it easy for me? So would that be for repurposing commercial property or residential properties?
It doesn't say.
So it could be not meant for a residential R1, R3 zone, correct?
It's a broad umbrella. It says...
So if you were representing me, that would be what you would say, would you not?
I would say what it says. It says, "Repurpose the existing building stock." I'm not going...
But that's ambiguous.
It doesn't say housing stuff.
That could have been meant, that could have been for, like, Landex. That could have been meant for those properties. It could be like for Sylvan Way, the old Wells Fargo building. Could be for the nursing home.
Is this a question?
I read it as...
Could it be for them?
I read it as intentionally brought.
Okay, let's go to the next question.
To optimize flexibility.
What's the next question you had said?
Goal Number Nine, ensure that the township has adequate municipal facilities and resources to effectively and efficiently meet the service needs of people living in, working in, and visiting Porcipony.
Okay, so again, that could be in a commercial zone, could it not?
Correct.
Thank you. Next question.
Goal Number Eleven, encourage new development and redevelopment to take into account the aesthetic character of the community in an effort to enhance the visual and aesthetic appearance of the municipality.
And you feel that not by redeveloping the building and knocking it down, that that's doing that, if I understand you correctly?
Correct.
With about 20 people, 40 people going in and out of that building on a daily basis, does that enhance the...
The resolution that approved this building as a mixed-use building cited the fact that it was retaining the building as a good thing, as one of the reasons why...
That's another point that I want to bring out. You said mixed use. So mixed use was, I believe, I don't know the correct term, maybe you can help me out with that, where someone that lives there operates a business downstairs with a small volume of customers coming in the scene, i.e. maybe a psychologist, maybe an accountant, an attorney, a graphic artist that did not have, or does not have, people that come in. So I guess, I don't see a parallel. How do you see that parallel? Maybe you can explain that to me.
What about a doctor?
If it's, I guess, a country doctor, I could see that, with, you know, one doctor, not five, not a medical center.
A medical use could go on that ground floor.
One doctor. He's got to live upstairs, right?
I don't see a cap on the number of patients.
He's got to live upstairs, right? A doctor only can see so many patients an hour.
Not in this building. There's a divide or disconnect between the occupant of the lower level and the occupant of the upper levels. Don't have to be, this is not a work...
Wasn't the previous approval for the person that lived there to operate an office?
We can get clarity on it, but my understanding was no.
We have, we have situations where approvals were given so that the doctor did not have to live there anymore. I won't get into the details, but it was on a main street, and he had young children, and he opted to keep his practice there. Once he had kids, he couldn't afford to have his kids playing on a main street. So we gave him a, this is not this house. We gave him a variance where the doctor could maintain the house, where he could live there, but he couldn't rent both. Okay, so there's precedent in the town for that.
There is. Talking about precedent, once this gets approved, it becomes strictly a commercial profit business. She outgrows it, she sells it. What happens then? What will happen to that property? If I'm not mistaken, that approval would move forward to any other new owner.
A variance runs with the land, but the variance can certainly be hooked to conditions to contain the use, so that it's not, so that it doesn't turn into something undesirable there. So hooked to the testimony on the record.
So now, this gets approved, it goes through, and once that happens, we have, Serbo has an empty building about three doors down. Now, if they came for a variance, a precedent's set, and it makes it harder for the board to say no to them because the precedent was already set there. Is that correct?
No, there's, again, each...
Each case is individually viewed, but if a precedent's set, that precedent is something that the board has to consider.
No, not for a new piece of property.
So we don't have to consider any precedence then on this case, correct?
What I said to you before, that there is an example where evidence was presented, evidence was presented to allow the doctor to move out of the house and keep his practice there. Okay? But there was a lot of restrictions on it. And sometime later, the doctor came back and said, "Well, I don't want my practice there, I don't want to live there, I want to rent the two facilities," and we said no.
Okay, thank you. The other points that you had made?
That was it.
That was it. So those points, and just to requalify, we clarify everything, those points could be based on commercial properties, could it not? That's what, that's what they could have meant on that, correct? They're not specifically saying we can do this in an R1 zone or an R3 zone.
I'm not sure I followed the question.
I think the question is, is that can you tell if the master plan goals were to be limited to certain zones and not apply to other zones?
No. You're not.
Okay, thank you. I hope the board considers.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
This is my house.
Just for the record, your name?
Pam McDonnell.
Pam McDonnell.
McDonnell, yes. That's my house. How is it going to be affected?
It's an open question, but visually, it's not, what you see now is not going to change in fact, as I understand it, there's a landscape plan forthcoming. It could be more screening here if you don't like looking at that house.
That's my, that's my property, right down there, yes. It goes with this fence, right down here.
Right. So here's all this green area between your property and the subject property, and again, we have an applicant here that is willing to put in landscaping.
We don't know what's shaping.
The testimony was, they don't know yet.
Yeah. I don't want any commercial buildings right here. Period.
Question mark, not period. Keep it up, Dave.
I get punched after.
It's kind of crock.
Nicholas Homiak. Getting back to Goal Nine, where you say, "Enhance living and working in Porcipony." Now, wouldn't you say that pertains particularly to people who already live in Porcipony and in particular neighborhoods? And if the people in that neighborhood felt disturbed or disgruntled by a zoning proposal, that they should be upheld because of losing the character of their neighborhood? I, would you think that could be an intention for Goal Number Nine?
No, no. The Medici case itself is the one that says, a zoning board decision specifically says it should not be based on the number of people in the room.
Well, how would, so you wouldn't expect any resistance because you're using the Medici code, so anything, anybody said as opposed to this would be negated by the Medici code?
This is, this is your master plan. These are words from your master plan. I went through a whole community engagement process. These are the words of your master plan.
These people right here in this neighborhood, this part of the master plan right now is affecting them or anyone who feels that Porcipony shouldn't...
That's a question, right?
Yes, it is a question.
I have an objection, and a polite one. You'd said, Mr. McDonough, wasn't your testimony that you believe that this proposal would not change the character of the community?
Correct.
Because his question was premised on that this is a change in the character of the community. Can you address that?
Sure. Again, aesthetically, functionally, this is going to remain a positive integration with the neighborhood. Visually, it's not going to change, it's going to stay as it is.
But it'll be a business. It won't be a resident. That's, so I would say, I would agree with Mr. O'Soward, that Goal Nine is for the neighborhood to decide. And the last question, you also said, the driveway, it would be up to current standards. Well, it was testified that the driveway would be ashfall, would be, not be porous, would be impervious. So I would think that an up standard would be porous, ashfall.
It's not true.
I think what you mean by upgrading would provide a proper ADA accessible space. That's the upgrade.
To consider the water going into the ground, which Porcipony has problems with.
That's a question of their problems. All right.
All right. I would think that I, my question would be that you, all right, you do feel that the driveway is up to standards, even though it's not the latest technology that can be used, something rather than ashfall to permit the water to infiltrate the ground?
It's really an engineering question.
It's late. The engineer will provide us with documentation if runoff is controlled is necessary, okay? I don't think we're going to stop paving parking lots and driveways. We're cutting it off for this.
It's the material, not the pavement.
I can just add that there's going to be a lot of cars turning around, and you don't have porous pavement in areas where you're going to have a lot of cars turning around.
July, July 12. That's it. This year. You okay? July 12? Excuse me? We haven't, we haven't heard the rest of the case yet. We've asked for an architect, we've asked for a fire report, we've asked...
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
Sign.
And signs. Whoa, 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 whoa. Do we have a motion to carry this case to July 12?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
I'm going to cut off the media. All right, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Public announcement, no further notice.
Yeah, no further notice will be made. Just stay with them, a minute. Now, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, if you have questions and you want to yell them out, now I don't care, because I'm not on the record anymore, okay?
You'll be able, when we come back, we're going to start this, so...